You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the February 27, 2023 meeting of the La Porte County Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the La Porte County Council regular meeting to order on February 27, 2023. Please turn off your cell phones. I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. At the end of the pledge, I'd like a moment of silence for the family of one of our own, Jeff Santana, of Jeremy Sobeki, who's our parking wreck, lost his father this afternoon, and for our other fellow councilman, Adam Karanka, for losing his aunt this week.
Mark, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Karanka.
Present.
Councilman Yagowski.
Present.
Councilman Keel.
Present.
Yagowski, say that already. Councilman Mullenauer.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Rosebaum.
Present.
All present. Thank you. We have everybody received the minutes. Oh, no, first of all, it's the approval of tonight's agenda. For those of you who may have seen it in the public, these are the minor changes that have happened, and I'm just gonna show, I'm just gonna tell you what they were. Number one, under new business, we're only seeking one position for parking wreck. It's just a recreation education programmer. And then the D, we're looking for a second person, a 4D caseworker position. There was a number five that talked about, that was the surveyor, but we took care of that business last month, and somehow it stayed on this month, and we didn't recognize it till the end. And then we also have the appointment to the Alcohol Beverage Commission, and we have four people for that. Hassan De Baglia, Kevin Kozlowski, Mark Kendall, and John Stimley. So, gentlemen, would somebody like to approve the agenda as it now stands?
Would you read that list one more time?
Certainly. Hassan De Baglia.
De Beja.
De Beja, thank you. Kevin Kozlowski, Mark Kendall, and John Stimley.
We didn't receive an application from Matt Sikorski?
I could not find one.
I'm not aware of one, but between now and when that's up for vote, I can certainly look.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing to our attention. What we'd like to do with the agenda, please?
Motion approved. Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Yagowski and a second for Mr. Keel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Karanka, could you just repeat it? Thank you. Approval of the January 23, 23 meeting minutes, we received them last week to review.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any ayes? Thank you. This is all approved. Public comment, we now open to public comment. We do ask that you keep it as brief as you can, and we will certainly welcome the opportunity here for you.
Good evening. Steve Hallfield, 6782 East, 100 South. Also have the former Lincoln Township Fire Chief with us and a board member, Leo Spence. I'll skip over since Mr. Rosebaum graciously explained about the ARP situation, but I would just like to suggest that we could use that money and just keep it, please, flowing. We've got a little problem down there at our fire department, and this, this may go over a little bit longer, but please indulge me if you will. We have a trustee that tried to remove the fire chief back in January. Mr. Spence and I went, meanwhile, I think I've talked to five out of seven of you members about this situation. We went through, Leo and I went, and we talked with the fire department. We've been working with them. I mean, talking to them once or twice a week, getting the situation back in control. As of last week, the township trustee, without notifying any of us on the board or anything, she removed all of the people in the fire department. She has not told us who the new people are. She's not told us what qualifications they have or anything. So, we are having a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Community Center in Fish Lake on 800 East. It's 6 o'clock. If any of you are welcome to be there, it would be appreciated just to listen and see what's going on. The township would have been willing to hang her last week if they, if they could have found her. So, I just want you to be aware that sometime in the future, we may, we may be coming forward with you to proceed with state statute to have her removed if she continues to do these things and makes mistakes. So, that's what I might, that was one.
Steve Hallfield.
Yes.
Is the new manpower in place?
Yeah.
Or is somebody there, right?
Yeah, there is someone. I spoke with Mr. Chek's office.
Okay.
She wasn't there, but I talked to one of her people. Then, before I get to my last one, the FEMA grant, that's been on everyone's. I've talked to, I know Mr. Novak, Mr. Cunningham, I think I've talked to Mr. Yagowski. We have the documents here. We would like to have these back. If you could make copies, let us have these back. This is the proof that that money was spent correctly. It went through the county, just like it was intended to do. So, if you could help us out with this, and Mr. Novak, these are the documents.
I, just, just for the record, I have no doubt that everything was followed. So, but I'll happy, well, actually, hand these to her, and she can make a copy, and we'll get those back to you. Thank you.
I went down, excuse, I went down the 13th of February and spoke at the state office, our state house, with Representative Doug Miller, Representative Pressle, State Board of Accounts and DLGF concerning the issues of our township, plus House Bill 1355. I made a suggestion to them, and I spoke to Mr. Rotten Novak about this, and I'd like to see how you guys feel. This is not gonna go away. They're gonna continue at the state level to do something with the townships, which, in my personal opinion, I think something does. But I offered up my services to be a chair of a meeting between the township trustees, the township board members, the fire departments, council members, commissioners. I think we're best doing this ourselves if we talk, and they suggested it also, that if we start talking, it might keep them off our backs. I think the townships need to work together more. I think there can be things done. I think they need to talk and do this. I'm looking for some help to get the word out, maybe some paperwork for agendas and stuff like that, and a, a meeting room. I just feel that we're better off in the driver's seat than being the bull in the trailer because not knowing where he's going. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're good. Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street, House Bill 1355. A lot of people don't know that went through, and there were some amendments added to it. I think they took La Porte County out of it, but I'm not 100% sure. But the sad thing was, it would have gave you guys, would have gave the county commissioners their approval to put smaller townships into a larger township. To me, I think that was done, some of it was pushed by Pressle and, and some other people involved. We have elected official, which is Rodney Washington, and I know how hard people are trying to get Rodney Washington out of office, but we, the people, keep voting them in. Taking shortcuts to violate somebody or disrespect our wishes on who we like to represent us is wrong. And I hope that if it didn't, they didn't take La Porte County out of it, I hope that we let the people have a vote and not make it, not be made up by a commissioner or a, a board with three Republicans on it when we have, we voted for a Democrat over there for that township. I just want something that's fair. I'm also here to talk about the diversity, appointment, diversity resolution that's on the table tonight. I want to thank you, Mr. Novak, Earl Cunningham. I've spoke with you briefly a few times, Mr. Yagowski, about this. I think it's a great thing, and something that should have came a long time ago. But I'm glad that it's on the table tonight to, because things won't change until we be able to talk about the truth of our county. And it's time for us to change the way we think and the way we believe. People shouldn't lose their jobs or be left out of the, the process because of the color of their skin. I hope that we continue to work together, and it shows, working with a Republican, Democrat, and Democrat is a great thing. When we work together, we can get things done. I'm gonna leave the rest up to my other friend, Mr. Brett Kelly, Stacy Benning, all those. They also worked hard on this. We met with you at the library numerous times, so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brett Kelly, Sr., Michigan City. Just gonna piggyback off of what Mr. McCormick said about the diversity. I think it's, it's well beyond time, and I think it's just a great deal to move forward, as I made the presentation several months ago to the council, and it appears that people listened. And it's good as constituent when you go to your elected officials, and they listen for righteous change. I think the diversity is paramount. You must grease and oil those wheels of diversity. And I am so glad to, to hear, and we gotta go to another legislative branch. I know you guys just do a resolution that we're talking about it reflecting the demographics of this county. When I come into the courthouse, I want to see people that look like me as well, you know? And the elected officials, they need to start hiring, a diverse hiring. I know they have the latitude, latitude to hire whom they want, but if you're going to be under the Democratic banner, which I am a staunch Democrat, it's time that the Democratic Party started pushing these people to hire people who are the staunchest Democrats, not only in this county, but nationally, black folk. So, I'm glad that we have made this one step, and I hope that it continues to go forward. I hope that it's passed. Me and Mr. Novak and Mr. Cunningham, we've talked diligently about this. So, it appears that it has some legs, and I'd just love to see it pass on the next face. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Warren Smith, 0783 South, 700 West, La Porte, Indiana. I'm at the Coast Guard Fire Department. What I have here is just something to show the board that what we spent our money on already, we, we have a long-term plan, we have goals, we're gonna build another station, we're gonna buy a quit. You know, those are probably $2, $3 million worth of expenditures in the next 10 years that we plan on doing on our own. We will be more than happy to show you as we progress what we spent the money on, you know, the, we would like to still receive the $10,000 every year if we possibly can. Hopefully, it continues. But I'll, I'll give you this receipt, just.
Just so you see what we have done so far.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. One moment, Mr. Yagowski.
I appreciate you bringing that today, but I would hope though that that was that the objective of the county council. Last year, when that $10,000 was given, your representative came to speak for everybody. It was supposed to have a report. I hope that everybody doesn't come individually. I'd like to, I'd like to see the report written like that was supposed to be, so we have it collectively. I do appreciate the information, but I like the, I like the whole group of fire.
The Fire Chiefs Association, that's what it went through before.
That's what we asked, we still haven't seen it yet.
Okay.
I prefer instead everybody coming up every meeting.
Right.
I'd rather have one full report.
Okay.
Like we asked, but that's not yours. It was through the.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Andy Snyder, La Porte Fire Chief, 809 West 18th Street. Also Vice Chairman of La Porte County Fire Chiefs Association. I am asking, I know that last month you tabled an appropriation for $160,000, $10,000 for each of these 16 volunteer departments. I'm asking that you would favorably remove that from the table tonight and also approve that. I, I know as to Councilman Yagowski's question, the, that was direction given to the Fire Chiefs Association. The first appropriation was through the ARP funds, and there was some ambiguity as how those were spent. The, as we moved forward with this appropriation that is on the table tonight, that is where a letter was submitted. Each one of the Fire Chiefs signed that letter as to how they were going to intend to spend that. We fully, once this appropriation is spent, we'll bring that back to you. I can go back to, it's the council's wish, I can go back as of right now and ask them how they spent that appropriation from the ARP funds, but that was not our understanding, unfortunately. So, we'll, we'll be happy to do that. Again, I would just like to ask that you would look favorably on this, if not tonight, definitely in the short-term future. I know there are some new council members. If they have not received that letter that was submitted back in August, I have copies right here. If I may approach, I can hand them to you, Mr. President.
You may approach.
Just for clarification, this is the letter for 2023's appropriation?
Yes, that is correct. This is the letter that is for the appropriation that is on the table right now. That first appropriation.
I think we actually shared this letter.
Yep.
Yeah, that first appropriation, there were really no stipulations put on that at the time that it was given out. I know moving forward, the council did ask that we put some stipulations on there and then report that back, and we will be more than happy to show you how that money is spent, even if it's in the terms of that it would go into an account. Some of the departments are looking to purchase a vehicle, obviously, and those cases, $10,000 will not do that, but maybe a couple of appropriations of $10,000 will get the job done for them. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members from the public? Hearing none, seeing none. Well, first, let me go to, is there any hands on Zoom? Seeing no hands, we'll close public comment. Move on to department head reports. Any department heads that'd like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Council, Mr. President. Sean Fitzpatrick, Director of Facilities for La Porte County. Real quick, I'm in the process of restructuring the, the department, and I have a, a position for Office Manager. It's a, a Comet Five position, and I'm asking for permission to fill that position.
Motion to approve.
We don't do that during public comment.
Oh, sorry.
This department.
This department is.
Okay.
This is department.
Sorry.
He's caught me there. What am I, I'm like.
So, is this, is this a replacement position?
It's a position that's already budgeted, and it will be replacing someone that is no longer in that position.
Moving to a new position.
Correct.
Okay, no, thank you for the clarification.
I'd like to reiterate my motion of.
Second.
Just give me a second, too. And Office Manager. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's 100% ayes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other department heads that'd like to come forward at this time?
Mr. President, I was wondering if I could speak from this area, possibly?
Yes, please.
I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce to the council and the public my new chief deputy, Rhonda Graves, who's with us for the first time tonight. Rhonda comes from Stark County. She was the former chief deputy treasurer there. For those in the community, you may know Rhonda from her involvement in the Girl Scouts, and she's been a regular worker on the election circuit for county elections. Welcome, Rhonda. And also a big shout out and thank you to Vaughn Galloway, who served with honor and distinction and integrity in, in the same office and has moved on to another county position that, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add, if I may, I did email and text the council people. I must apologize. I did find Mr. Sikorski's application, and I've emailed it and, and texted it to each of you for the ABC position. I apologize that you did not receive it with your packets.
Welcome.
Yeah, so welcome to Rhonda.
You're welcome.
If you don't, any other department heads that'd like to speak at this time? If not, we'll close department head reports, and we'll move on to liaison reports. This time, we'll go from my right to left. So, Mr. Cunningham?
One significant step, many of you have seen the Juvenile Corrections Head of Department will be taking a new position as a magistrate approximately April 1st or April 15th. So, we have to keep an eye on that because there will be a transition phase.
Thank you. Any other?
None other than this man.
Thank you. Mr. Yagowski?
Real quick, we have another problem that we're not airing this again on cable. And this has been.
Okay.
So, just.
Okay, we've now noted that for the minute. Did we note that in the minutes, please?
I didn't hear what you, I'm sorry.
That we are not, that apparently this is not on cable at the moment, our meeting.
So, the second part of it is, I've been on the data board for quite a few years. We first started out data board, we had flip phones, and we had pagers. And 20 years later, we got what we have now. The rules have changed aggressively over the years. I don't believe that we stuck with, with the resolutions, probably they should have been corrected over the years to, to say with the future of the data board was allowed, was allowed to happen. But we hear just recently, a few years back, when we had a cyber attack, we were the ones that were involved in it. The commissioners did not question it. I know there's some question now because of a resolution they found back a few years back. I believe the data board still is, with seven people on it, and it's across members of Commissioner, Council, Otters, Siders, Net, that it represents the county well to, when we have issues that are data-driven. So, I would hope that we can in the future continue to work this process out. And again, there's been, over the last few years, there's not been a really good, when we have ordinances and resolutions that have not well, been well documented. I know that Thaddeus Martino's looked up things that we know were passed that we could not find. So, this is not, this is not something new. But the, I do believe the data, because those serve as a good purpose for the county, for the resources, for technology that's changing daily. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yagowski. Mr. Keel?
I have a huge liaison report tonight. I have been working on, working my way through the different liaison assignments I have. I've had sit-down meetings with the sheriff and the treasurer. Sheriff Heeks' details are all well documented in the emails he sends out to the other council members. He does an excellent job with that. I'll have some other comments later on tonight, but those are the main things for liaison.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to Mr. Novak.
Thank you. We had an animal control board meeting, attended FMAC Fairgrounds Management Event Corporation, the weekly complex flood construction meeting over here, and I've been emailing out some pictures, trying to keep up on that so that everybody could see that. Visited the juvenile center to look at their gym floor out there, met with the highway department, JVC, I already mentioned that, 911 Center, talked with them about the, the new equipment and everything that's coming in over there. Health Department, we talked to them regarding the AEDs that are on the agenda for tonight. As Mr. Hallfield stated, had several conversations with Lincoln Township regarding the things on our agenda tonight. Purdue Extension, the Redevelopment Commission, had several talks with other people regarding everything from the spongy moths to building maintenance, the legislative session. Farm Bureau had a great event at, over in Union Mills this last weekend, and the, got to visit the Westfield Public Library in the Boys and Girls Club, was doing the presentation, and it was very good. If you haven't seen, there, it's, it's the Boys and Girls Club of La Porte County, so they're doing some incredible things there. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a little bit of a long list, so I'll go as quickly as I can through it. Is there something else? Oh, Mr. Karanka, before I go, would you be so kind?
Thank you, Mr. President. In the last month, I've met with the county clerk in Michigan City Courthouse and took a tour of the, the addition there. Met with Purdue Extension in Swallow Water in one day. One thing I want to touch on there is I'm promised by Kelsey as being the new head of Purdue Extension for La Porte County, and I'm hoping to see great things coming from that program, given past years. Also took some time to attend the monthly drainage board meeting and had a meeting with the Health Department head. So, in short, that's it.
Could you share what happened on Friday morning?
Excuse me?
You participated in something on Friday morning. Could you share about that?
I still can't quite understand.
Okay. You, you participated at La Porte High School in an event on Friday morning?
Yes, yes. So, I was part of the, the legislative session at the high school with Commissioner Haney, Representative Pressle, and Senator Bahatchek, Mayor Dermody, and Councilman Frankie, presenting to both the public and some of the, the high school students just on what activity is going on, local government. Spoke mostly about the role in terms of the council itself versus not necessarily covering the issues that we have in front of us at the moment, but just making sure that folks understand what our role is in government versus the other parties that are out there.
Thank you, and I appreciate you filling in for me as I was out of town this past week for missing the both events that you mentioned, the Farm Bureau's event as well. Before I go, Mr. Mullenauer?
Okay. I attended the La Porte County Board of Health meeting on January 24th, and I also attended both the Commissioner's Special Meeting and the County Redevelopment Commission Meetings on January 25th. On February 1st, I attended both the Commission Meeting and the Hazmat Emergency Management Advisory Board Meeting. And on February 7th and 8th, I went down to Indianapolis and attended the Association of Indiana County's Legislative Conference, and hadn't done that for quite a few years, since I've been sheriff, really. And I was really interested in going this time due to the fact of there's some bills that are pertaining to mental health, and I'm especially interested in the ones in, for our jails, to see if we can get some funding for that. And, and we all know that's a, that's a major problem, has been for many years, and it still is. So, that, and I also seen an article in the paper, which many of you probably have also, for the law enforcement in this county where it's CIT, but it's Crisis Intervention Team that they're developing. I think they sent 25 in March, I believe, and I believe, or maybe another 25 in March. I think it was February they sent 25, and for, for training on mental health and emergency crises. And I'm glad to see that taking off, and I hope all the officers and first responders can attend something like that also. The only other thing I've got is, I wanted to mention, and I'm sure some of you have known Claudine Beatty. We have two employees with the county that are related to Claudine, and she's well-known throughout the county, especially Kingsford Heights area. And I know my wife and I knew her pretty well with, she was a bus driver for many years. I think, I think the paper said 30 years, 25 or 30 years, and just wanted to send our thoughts and prayers to that family. And one other thing, and we're seeing a lot of volunteer firemen here tonight. And one other thing, and we're seeing a lot of volunteer firemen here tonight, and I know we lost a very important person with the death of Mike Turner. And you talk about a volunteer, he was on Cool Spring and Center Townships, a fire, volunteer fire department, many, many years. And he was just a very dedicated person, and I think he was probably a volunteer of all volunteers with, he's just a great guy, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I guess it's my turn. Been involved with the RDC meetings with some other people right here. I met with the leadership at the Juvenile Service Center, and I've also had the opportunity to meet with a large group of the employees and have some really good discussion on pay, and that it is a process that I'll talk a little bit about later. I met with, I've spoken with the Health Department and on a few different issues. We plan to have a meeting this Friday to go over some of them. We also had a joint session with the commissioners on process of hiring a permanent HR director, and so we are going to be talking a little bit about that shortly. I was part of a virtual meeting to discuss some of the potential work that might need to be done at the Lepore Courthouse due to some rainwater issues. Mr. Karanka mentioned that he represented me at the legislative update. And I also want to thank a former city councilman, high school teacher, Mr. Joe Merzinski, gave extra credit for students to attend that meeting. So that is one of the ways you can coerce students to attend and be involved in government. Anyway, the FMEC, we've had several meetings that I've attended. We have an executive and a regular scheduled meeting, and we have a meeting on Friday, I believe. There is some discussion on highway and bridge that had been started with Mr. Yagowski and Commissioner Haney and Marquis Electric, that upon completion of the 23 repairs that we start working on putting together a multi-year plan, because the way we need, the lead time for parts is so long now that we need to start the plan early, as early as we possibly can, so we can have the parts available to us during our shutdown period for next winter. I've met with the highway department, and I've also had the pleasure of meeting with the new head of the Purdue Extension, and that's enough for now. I closed liaison reports, and we'd just like to ask about correspondence, please. If you could just read out what correspondence we've had.
Well, Mr. President, we have received, and we distributed to you earlier in the month of February, correspondence from the Lepore County Pioneer Cemetery Commission. The correspondence essentially was a copy of the annual report of the cemetery commission, containing the commission budget and expenditures for the year 2022, activities for the year 2022, and plans of the commission for the year 2023.
Okay, I'm just gonna note that that's not a complete annual report because there was no balance sheet, we have no idea how much cash they have on hand, so that is something that we'll need to ask them next year or to ask them about. But right now, it was, now let's move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have resolution number 2023-2A, a resolution approving the Sheriff Commissary Fund expenditures. This is something that I believe that we commonly do every year, and we have Sheriff Heeg coming up.
Good evening, Sheriff Heeg. This is something that we do with every new sheriff. This was done with Mr. Mullenhour and Sheriff Boyd eight years ago. It just creates an efficiency, as far as commissary expenditures, I've met with several of you on this, and this is something that state law does allow and they actually encourage because it does create an efficiency process with the expenditures out of the commissary fund.
President, motion to read, resolution number 2023-2A, no, I'm sorry, 2A, by title only.
Second. We have a motion and a second, to read by title only. Any discussion? All in favor?
Correct, sorry. Point of work, could we just, without reading the resolution, exhibit A, can we just read that into the record just so the public understands the list of the things that qualify under that, so that...
Are you okay to open?
Understand, is that okay?
Endless, is that one page?
Endless, okay. And you agree?
Yes.
Because you seconded?
I didn't, no, I didn't second it.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, you seconded? Okay, thank you. Got it right this time, maybe. Anyway, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Resolution first. This is a resolution approving Sheriff Commissary Fund expenditures, and the exhibit A that you talked about includes, number one, reimbursement for lost or damaged inmate property; two, reimbursement for expense of inmate transit; three, reimbursement for damaged employee property; four, reimbursement for investigation expenses; five, expenses for advertising community events that promote the sheriff's office; six, matching funds for grants; seven, expenses for installation and service of sheriff's office equipment; eight, expenses for contracting with professional services; nine, expenses associated with rental of specialized equipment; 10, expenses associated with rewarding inmates and employees; 11, expenses associated with special events for inmates; 12, expenses regarding special details and events; 13, did I say 12? 13, expenses associated with hosting training events; 14, expenses for public service announcements; 15, expenses related to the funeral service of an employee; and 16, any purpose that benefits the sheriff's office that does not exceed $1,000.
Thank you for reading that aloud. What with the council?
President, motion to approve, resolution number 2023-2A.
Second.
Third.
Okay, we have, I'll just go in the order. Mr. Yagowski made the motion, and we had a second first by Mr. Kiel and then by Mr. Novak. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 100% for it. Okay. Only I have the summary. Okay, resolution number 2023-2B, a resolution regarding employee diversity.
Mr. President, motion to approve as presented, and I'd like it for it to be read into its entirety, please.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? We have a second from Mr. Karanka. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Order, would you like, care to read that?
Yes, this is a resolution regarding the county hiring of minorities. Whereas in 2021, Lepore County's population was 112,390 with a racial demographic makeup of 78%, 78% white, non-Hispanic, 11.4% black, non-Hispanic, 7.4% Hispanic, and 3.2% Other. And whereas the current racial demographic makeup of Lepore County employees is 88% white, non-Hispanic, 8.5% black, non-Hispanic, 1.9% Hispanic, and 1.6% Other. Whereas the Lepore County Council acknowledges that the racial demographic of current Lepore County employees is not equal to the racial demographic of Lepore County as a whole. Now therefore be it resolved by the Lepore County Council that the commission, department heads, and human resources department actively seek minority applicants, so the racial demographic of county employees at minimum matches the racial demographic of Lepore County as a whole. And the resolution shall be in full force and effect on its adoption and signing. End of resolution.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. I embrace the resolution. I think it should have been happened a while ago, it's fine. Problem I have with the resolution, and I brought this up at numerous meetings we had with HR, that we have applicants that we've turned down continuously. Let's use an example of a first man in the janitorial system that would be able to work at the county. They have to have a high school education or equivalent. We've had people come in, and because they haven't had their high school, they've turned them down. We have to be able, if we're going to bring people into the community, into our, into the county complex, we have to learn to use a different approach as far as hiring. I know there's been applicants that came in, and I'm gonna tell you, I brought up those applicants personally on readings that were overqualified. I love that concept. I don't know, all of a sudden I have a person to tell who's overqualified. If we aren't gonna do the same steps that we did to get this through, we're never going to hire the people that we want to get into the county to make a blended type of a community that we have in our areas outside of, of outside the county, Michigan City, Lepore, Trail Creek, and so on and so forth. So again, I know this is, this is, this conversation's brought up, but we have failed miserably on the hiring process.
Thank you. Mr. Novak?
Real quick, I just want to add that this is just, it's a tool. The council technically has no teeth of enforcing this, enforcing this. This is to open the dialogue, and the thing you gotta remember is the county, majority of the minority employees in the county are behind the scenes. So the majority of them are probably between Community Corrections, the Juvenile Center, and possibly the jail. So there's very few that are out in the public, whether it be Hispanic or African-American. And this is a tool to start the process, to get it going, and hopefully that it starts the dialogue and we get things moving forward and put this item behind us because in 2023, we shouldn't be having this conversation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts?
You need a motion to approve?
I would agree with Mr. Novak, and in some regards, Mr. Kelly says, "I want to see people that look like me." Well, the good thing is, he's not seeing them because he's not going to Community Corrections, Juvenile Center, and the jail. But you do know some employees that are working in those areas that just aren't highly visible to the public. But we do need to put a better face on those public offices. And I think just a public statement is, we all need, we're all elected officials. We need to encourage the elected officials in those departments that it's beneficial to them to hire Hispanics and blacks at this time just because they are part of the electorate and it put a face in there that helps you deal with somebody. A good example would be, anytime you can find a Hispanic that speaks Spanish to put in any one of our departments, overcomes an obstacle with our constituents, and we have to at least try to do that. So I think that most people would be shocked to realize, as we went through the correspondence here on the numbers, that we're as close as we are concerning the bad job we've done in promoting. But they're just not in places where they're highly visible, and we need to improve that considerably. Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Mr. Cunningham, would you like?
Second.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's 100% for it. Let's move on. We're now going to old business, we're going to new business, sorry. We have consideration for approval of council president's authorization to hire replacement positions for. We'll do these each individually, just because they're different departments. Lepore County Parks Department Recreation and Education Program are positioned.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. B, Lepore County Clerk, for a clerk's position.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have 100%. All those in, for the Lepore County Highway Department to replace a mechanic position and a bridge tender, so there's two positions. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any conversation? Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Again, 100%. We go to the Lepore County Prosecutor. We have two positions here, victim advocate position and a 4D caseworker position.
Motion approved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ayes, all, any ayes, please?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, passes. Lepore County Council Soil and Water, Lepore County Soil and Water for a soil conservation disposition.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Some discussion, update on that situation. Interview was conducted last week and a job was tendered. I don't know that it's been accepted, but I know that it was offered.
Thank you for the update. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries. Lepore County Auditor for a clerk position.
If I may clarify, Mr. President, we had a vacating of a position in payroll, which we have an internal candidate to fill, and also then the empty position in claims in accounts payable that now needs to be filled, so we're technically asking for both of them.
Okay, so we have payroll specialist and the clerk position and accounts payable.
Motion approved for both.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Nays? Any nays? Thank you, motion carries. Consider authorization of County Council Attorney Guy DiMartino to perform professional services for the Board of Commissioners with regard to the flooding at the annex and insurance. Any services performed for the Board of Commissioners would be paid for by the Board of Commissioners out of their professional services.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion?
Just want to point out, the majority of, a lot of this is money in, money out, but Guy, Mr. DiMartino, our attorney, since we are the financial branch, this just, in his expertise and insurance claims and things, it just makes sense to have him be involved, so.
For clarification, will this need approved by the commissioners?
No.
They were actually, one of them requested it, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any nays? Hearing none, motion carries. We've been asked to give time for Jackie Dermody from Harmony House in Casa Acaya to give us a presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Wanted to say thanks for putting me on the agenda tonight and hope you all received the packet that I sent. I know it's pretty lengthy, but I thought it would be kind of good for you to have a little bit of history about family advocates, what we do and the programs that we provide for the community. So my ask tonight is this, in August of 2022, at the budget hearings, the county council set aside $90,000 for family advocates, like they do every year, and $10,000 of those dollars goes towards our community youth advocate program, and then $80,000 goes towards our CASA program. To my understanding, that out of that $80,000, it kind of matches to what the state provides. So the state for 2023 is providing us with $54,765, which is a pretty huge drop for us from the state, and then it could be a drop from you as well if you just match the amount. So my question is, would it be okay if I submit a purchase order and use the whole $90,000 that was set aside for us? And the reason that they believe, well, this isn't the only reason, but one of the reasons there was such a significant drop for 2023's budget is because they do a two-year look back to 2021, which was the year of COVID where there was just a lot of, not as much activity and 50 less, 50 less chins petitions filed, which kind of almost, you know, it's almost $25,000, so. So that's my ask.
Okay, Mr. Novak, would you like to speak?
Would you need this all up front, or is it?
What I have always, well, what we've always done is traditionally, the first week of January, we submit for the money. Once it makes it to the prosecutor's office, they're the entity that holds it for us. Cheryl Osborne gets her PO, and then she processes, and then, I'm not sure if we get an automatic deposit or a check is sent, but then we in turn receive the money. So we normally do that in January, but I would do that next month if possible.
Mr. Dermody, doesn't the money go into Superior too?
Oh, the supervised visitation dollars go into Superior Court too. Yes, I mean, whoever wants to hold all of it is fine with me. I'm not sure how it got decided, but that's...
Mr. President, this was going through the courts. The courts donated the money, basically, because the money is donated. And the judge decided two years ago he didn't want the money going through his court. And uh the judge decided two years ago he didn't want the money going through his court anymore, so that's why it's gone through here, but. The judge always gave the money in January.
Okay.
Motion to approve for ninety thou- not to exceed ninety thousand.
We have a motion on the floor not to exceed ninety thousand. I don't know if we really need the motion if it's in the budget.
I mean, because we we can't appropriate it.
This was budgeted?
This was budgeted. For the full amount.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're just approving payment to go out now once the P O comes in? This is a budget amount, so it's not an additional appropriation.
Correct. I spoke with the prosecutor today. He's aware of this.
Okay, then we'll get to go.
Motion to approve the transfer.
Second.
We have a motion and second to prove the transfer. We'll go with that.
Or anything else that's needed. Let me clarify my.
And and. Uh any any comment, any further discussion? If not, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, motion carries. I just want to say one thing. I have been a um. Volunteer for the Kaya program for at least three youth members and um I cannot speak highly enough of the program. And um what it can do, the potential that what it can do to a youth that has uh on their first offense has gone wrong. And you get the opportunity to talk with them and work with them and and help them see um. That there's another light, that there's another way and um it it is personally a rewarding position as a volunteer. And um and and the things that the the support that we get from your office as a volunteer is incredible. And uh I I I. Wholeheartedly um have total support for uh your organization, so thank you.
Well, thank you and um we're always looking for more volunteers, so if anybody's interested, please feel free to reach out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't all speak about.
Okay, we now move on to the Port County Sheriff. Permission to spend three thousand. Up not to exceed three thousand from the K nine donation account for miscellaneous equipment and training. And then we'll go to the next one.
Mr. President.
Motion to approve by Mr. Yagowski, a second by Mr. Cunningham. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. B, permission to spend thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. From the commissary account to move the generator from Eighth Street Building to the sheriff's maintenance garage.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. The only discussion I have is I just want to make sure that everybody is well aware in the public. Because we are aware on the council, because we received a letter, that the commissioners gave permission for this to happen as well. As they are in control of the buildings and I wanted to make sure everybody knew that.
Correct. This is something that we started working on uh last year um and then with the flood, it kind of kind of stalled out a little bit. Uh the commissioners last year weren't supportive of this. We've reached out to the commissioners this year. They're in support of this and by doing this, I understand that with the flood, we've got some occupants back into that building, but uh. The uh this will, they'll still have power and nothing will change for their operations there at the Wall Bash and Eighth Street Building.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, okay? Yes, Mr. Yagowski.
So, yeah, I think that could be moved right away, but the reason why that was there is because the Health Department was there and needed it for we we what we purchased it for the Health Department. Where where does the thirty-nine thousand, six seventy-nine come from for moving a generator?
Uh part of that is just coming as far as moving that big piece of machinery and coming over to the uh over to the sheriff's maintenance garage. The second of all is. We have to install a new transfer switch at the maintain- or at our maintenance garage and that's where some of that cost is coming from.
So the highway department couldn't move this generator, because we moved that generator in, so I'm asking a question.
You know, that's a good question. It's something we could probably.
I don't know a problem with, I have a big problem with spending forty thousand dollars to move a generator. I don't have a problem with the purpose of it. It's great that we're going to reuse something that we that was that we brought up last year anyway. Uh they can do it right now because there's no e- the officer.
We're not, uh and to be honest, we're not looking to have it done like this week. There's some lead time on this new switch.
I would like, I'd like to have consideration of 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 looking into a better method of.
I'd be glad to get with Mr. Stevens from the Highway Department, see if they can provide assistance.
Yep. Great, because the one that we received over at the. Uh. At the um old folks home, the they moved, they were able to move it, so they we have the assistance of of equipment. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so uh with those that made the motion, would you like to add the part of uh to seek um. Alternative method of movement to save some money?
Yep.
That we're just adding that.
That's right.
Line in there, okay. Um so we have a motion and a second. They both agreed. Uh any further discussion? If not. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Nays? Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Uh La Porte County Highway requesting a motion of support. And he's and it's not to exceed two million dollars for the purchase of new trucks. Um. We did receive uh a list of of vehicles. Um there were. I had it written down somewhere. There were uh two uh, no, it was eight. Double axles and then two. Single axles or something like that.
Was seven uh seven tandem axles.
Seven tandem.
Five five tandem axles and two single axles for a a total bid of one million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And the, I'm sorry.
So the the problem I've shared with with a lot of you and uh I'm sure Andrew McGuire from EMS can can uh vouch for it too, that. The lead time with uh commercial vehicles right now is is astronomical, the amount of time it takes to get them. Uh we recently spoke with our salesman. He came in to talk about. Uh the chassis that that hit the equiper. For the last order, uh the one point eight that you guys had had approved, I believe about a year ago. Uh so those are just hitting the ground now, the last half of them to get equipped. And the problem is that the salesman shared with the the global supply chain shortage the way it is. Uh if we don't make an order in the first quarter of twenty-three. Uh if we make that order, he can guarantee delivery first quarter twenty-five. If we wait to second quarter of twenty-three. He can't guarantee how much further out into twenty-five that order will go. So that's that's why I'm here for a motion of support, so we can at least uh get the ball rolling on the order. Uh a large, a large majority of our fleet right now are uh, you know, from the last century, so.
Mr. President, motion approved of two million dollars for twenty per per for the support of future trucks to be purchased. Approximately next term.
We have a motion of support. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Um any other further discussion? If not.
I do.
You do, okay.
On these uh trucks could, I know the Sheriff's Department usually sends photos when they get, you're going to trade these. Vehicles in, right? There's trade-in for all of them?
No, there's a, there's no trade-ins. We're we're uh keeping the trucks that are in the existing fleet, so we have uh backups. There. There will be some of the oldest of, you know, the oldest of the fleet will will gradually get thinned out. They'll get evaluated and then thinned out and ran through the uh the county sale.
County sale, okay.
Correct.
Okay, um. All right, could you let let um I think all of us know when that sale will be coming up, so we could take a look, see what's being sold? I'd I'd really appreciate it. I know myself, I'd come out there and take a look and.
Correct, and I would I would encourage uh several of the members of Stop Out County Highway. Uh if you haven't, come on out. I'm uh proud of the team we have out there and. I'd like to give you the tour around the grounds and kind of show you what we're what we're up against uh as we work on a long-term capital equipment plan here. Which I I hope to submit uh to the commissioners and the council in July. Uh. We're we're kind of in a stopgap area right now where we we have some immediate needs. Uh you're going to get tired of seeing me. So I'm going to be back with some equipment needs unfortunately too. Uh but once we get caught up, I think we can, we can move on with a good ten-year capital equipment plan, so. Uh it'll be a little less painful over here.
Mr. President, I know Mike Monour's wife, I don't think he should go to the auction and buy a truck, but that's.
I'm not going there to buy.
My second half.
Mr. Novak, you had.
One of them classic mags that look nice in uh Mike's yard out there.
Quick Sue would not be happy about that.
Quick question, Alan. This is uh. Is this going to the commissioners yet? I noticed it's not on their agenda for Wednesday.
Yeah, I I already went to the commissioners uh.
And they voted on this?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President, as Mike Monour's neighbor, I'm wondering if I can comment also?
No need.
He'd like an orange truck.
Park it in front of Tim.
So, uh Mr. Novak, you had another comment?
No.
You want to add? Nope. So without any other comment, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hundred percent.
Any nays? Motion carries uh of support, it's a motion of support, just repeating that, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh we now um uh Mr. Reardon, Matt Reardon, who's uh. A specialist uh for the R D C. Um he came to want to speak to us about the K I P rail connectivity. C S X park connection and repayment agreement, so let him explain it further.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, as uh. President Rosenstein uh alluded to Rosenbaum rather. Uh. Uh the R D C is has been in discussions with C S X Rail and uh. Two of the operators within the facility and uh they've requested some assistance from uh the county. And the assistance would come in the form of a of short-term loan. Um that would go directly to C S X to construct their rail rail switch into the park. And um we have an agreement signed by both parties, J B C Rail, as well as Kingsbury Elevator, Inc. That if the funds from rail, new rail cars service. Aren't sufficient to pay back the county, you. Uh they, those two entities would be financially responsible for paying back the county. The deadline would start. Uh 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 would be the first date of construction and then the, I mean, excuse me, the clock would start when construction is ended. These uh pri- uh materials would be owned by C S X. They have a separate agreement with the unions for construction. And they would be handling that. There would be a separate agreement with C S X and the operator and that would be J B C as to how this would come together. Um I'm simply coming here to request uh your consideration. Um once we have the final documents put together. From C S X, uh I would come forward and request this uh formally and a a formal appropriation. From, you know, either wind tax or ceded uh funds. And I'm here to answer any questions you want about that or anything else while I'm up here.
Mr. Yagowski, would you like to go?
Yeah. The fear I have working with C S X is like what they've done in Michigan City, for example. We we had two railroad crossings, they had to shut down. What's our guarantee that they're going to do something in the future if they're going to have this, that they will maintain? To the standards of a rail industry should be, because it didn't do it in Michigan City. I have no problem with supporting the project, but I have a problem with their history. Of what they had done on the rail. I have been through, actually was through Washington on a same conversation. About large carriers like this and what they've done in communities and stuff like that, so.
Sure.
Uh yeah, and I can give you the two examples. One, one uh road was shut down for eight months. And we're talking about, uh they wouldn't even want the ci- the city would say, well, let us fix it. They wouldn't let it happen, so we, the roads. It was Tillwood Avenue, by the way, so it's irrelevant, but.
This uh particular um spur into the park uh comes off their main line. And um I while I I will share your concern with the representatives from C S X and I'm I'm. Going to suggest that that assurance is in their contract documents with the with the group as they build the spur into the park. The um, you know, that's their spur, it's their main line. We don't have control. What the county does have control over is the um operations in the park and the speeds in the park. And how the cars are handled within the park, so you know, C S X is on the hook for delivering cars to this location and and then they're they're done. Um but I share your, I'll share your concern with them. Um I certainly understand what, you know, a lot of discussion about rail and rail service and rail cars. Um it's important to make sure that that's uh that communities are protected. I know that with the the help of this council. And uh the previous commissioners and the current commissioners with the switcher agreement we have, um that removes the county. From that liability and aspect of what's going on and the operator has that um available, so. The um, you know, the idea is is, I guess, pretty simple. There's going to be enough rail track, traffic and new customers. To uh to pay that five hundred thousand back. Um I'm. Sure that C S X isn't doing this out of the goodness of their heart. There's profit involved. And that's why they're willing to put in the spur, uh have the spur installed at this time. Has to do with traffic. For operating businesses that are within the park, period, and they wouldn't do it otherwise.
Sure, and I and I, again, I don't know a problem with how you brought it up, but my question would be the maintenance, the long-term maintenance.
Yes.
We're if they're, if we're committing in twenty twenty-three. In twenty thirty, the future council may say, what do we come up with this agreement when we can't get things fixed?
Sure, well, uh um from from what I understand about how this particular operation will work, it's C S X's. You're basically front funding, front funding the money that would be paid back to the county through operations, so it's theirs to maintain. And so once that's done and you have your five hundred and fifty thousand dollars back, it's their concern to operate within the park.
No, I will.
But I understand what you're saying.
I will not be in the council in twenty thirty.
Huh? You you might be, I don't know, but.
Mr. Auditor, would you please note that?
Well, you've been around since the start of this discussion at K I P, so you know, I think a few of you have been around the block out there, but um.
What's the maximum length of the loan?
Pardon me?
Maximum length of the loan?
Three years.
Thank you.
And this is to connect our present line, right? It's really that switch down there with the C S X?
Correct, so the county in conjunction with the I E D C um has created the uh interim connections within the park. And this is their outside part, that would be a C S X's switch into the park, not to be confused with the Ready Grant. And C N Railroad at the other end of the park, that the other two users are financially participating and. To go up to the bridge that serves us with the other rail road.
Now, we've been waiting a long time for it, so.
Right.
That's, Mr. President, may I?
Please.
That's what I just want to reiterate, that at the same time, the C N connection, which is owned by Mr. Limburg.
Correct.
So uh the county owns no switches.
We do not.
Uh coming into the park.
No.
But that is being done with the Ready Grant for the bridge. That's like the last component over there. We got that through the stake.
Yes.
With your help. Um and so they're completing that line and then we'll do the C S X at the same time. And get that done and we have full connectivity from two class one railroads in there, which is something that, you know, we all know about. The nightmare of the six million dollars that we put out there years ago and that rail didn't go anywhere. Well, now it's going to finally go somewhere, so.
The other thing that the that the council might not be aware of is that the Indiana um Indiana Economic Development Corporation is is. With is going out in the state and identifying uh S S I sites or it's um, you know, uh special sites. Uh for bigger projects and Kingsbury has been designated as one of them. There's a couple more things we have to do, but the fact that it has this connectivity. Moved us uh from uh low on the pile to a very high priority for the I E D C and the select site initiative, so. We're working with NIPSCO and the rest of the utilities to 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 do this. That's one other piece of it.
And and in connection to that, NIPSCO's pledge, I think it's three point whatever million dollars in upgrades to the power.
Yeah, pledge is an interesting word. I think they have to do that, uh which is nice.
Trying to be.
Uh but that that's that's a positive way to look at it, but we do also have that ability to do that.
Right.
So is this for a motion of support, right?
Uh we could do a motion of support. It was really for informational purposes right now. Uh Mr. Keel.
Uh remind me or us, uh how much money would we be loaning them?
Oh, five hundred and fifty thousand.
And this would be 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 paid back over a period of time over three years, not just at the end, correct?
Yeah, it would be paid, well, in theory, they'd be um with the rail traffic, they'd be paying back, so I'd have to work with the auditor's office. To set up the appropriate account, so that money would be held in there. Uh but if it is not, if we don't have the full five fifty back. Then at after three years, then we get a check for the balance from Limborg and and Carol.
So hypothetically, if business is booming, we could get repaid back prior to the end of that three years. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to of support.
Second.
We have a a motion of support and a second. I'd like to make a comment.
Oh, sure.
No, it's okay. This is all good. Um this is a, you know, I haven't lived in the county here as long as some of the others around me. Um but one of the things that I did learn very quickly is that economic um development is huge. And you have to have places where people want to come. And by adding rail, you do not realize how many more opportunities there are. It is also an opportunity for people who've been holding that land forever and forever to sell it to uh. To it's a good opportunity for them to sell it when we can attract more businesses. And hearing that the state is looking around and they do uh get a tremendous amount of leads and feed a lot of leads to the county. That this can help us because now as you start going to the top of the list. Um you get greater opportunity and you have more visits for more uh for more business and as. We conduct ourselves on the council and and uh the county government conducts ourselves in in. As professional manner as possible and as smoothly as possible, the outsiders look in and they see how that works. And that's where they want to come, that's where they want to be. And so. We'll have other issues to worry about next and that'll be housing, but another issue, another day. Anyway.
Right.
I got my two cents and any other comments?
But are you seeking a motion of support today or?
Yeah, that would be great and then I would uh in theory, come back to the next meeting with finalized paperwork from C S X. Uh right now I have a resolution that's been signed by the Redevelopment Commission. As authorized at their last meeting from J B C Rail and from uh Mr. Limborg, so. They're all, everybody's agreed to agree at this juncture, but except you're in charge of the uh the the funding.
So we do have a motion of support. So we do have a motion of support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carried. It seemed to me like it was 100%.
If anybody has any questions, please feel free to reach out as we're going through the process. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Moving on to number seven, the appointment of council members to property damage insurance claim committee. So just to explain this real quickly, the county is going to be receiving money from the insurance company and we're going to have to disperse it out to all the vendors who are doing the work. If the vendors, if it wasn't pre-approved by the insurance companies, they wouldn't be doing the work. So this is an in and out thing and it is something similar to what we did with the committee with spending money for COVID a couple of years ago. And we're going to do the committee, there's be two members of the council at this point, one member of the commissioners. And the person who has the authorization to appropriate the funds is our auditor and so therefore that would be the, the members of that committee. Should we need to do, if there's any, if there's anything more than that, then we will bring that back to you. But all we're going to be doing is authorizing payments. So this way, the payments that go out have been pre-approved. And if there's any additional funds needed for any additional things, that's going to have to come before this council if it's not being reimbursed by the insurance company. But that's why we're fortunate to have our council, our, our council attorney on the job trying to fight for us to get the money so we don't have to bring up more from here. So with that, we're going to, because there's two liaisons to the commissioners and one of them is already involved with the property, that would be Mr. Novak and then myself also because of my background with, as a CPA, financial background as a CPA. So we will, we will be the members from the, from the council. Okay. This is a request to add full-time position.
You're gonna, you're gonna.
Would you like, would you like to vote on that to approve it then? Let's do a vote. Would you, motion to approve in a second? Motion a second? All those in favor, please say discussion, yes.
So I'm wondering, so if we did not have this committee, we would, these requests would be coming back to the council on a monthly basis for approval, correct?
No, they would just go directly to the auditor.
Just directly to the auditor, so we're adding extra oversight essentially.
This is just money in, money out. It's not, any, like as he stated, any additional, anything above what the insurance is believed to be covering 100%? If we spend any money above that, it has to come back to the council.
I would appreciate if we could get like some sort of monthly report or updates on, on how things are going throughout the process, just so that we're kept up to date for when we get asked by constituents.
We certainly can keep a, a running schedule as we go along.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that there is $250,000 sitting in, in an account right now and we're expecting more in any day. Okay. So any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you for making sure we did that. Request to add full-time position at Waits and Measures for a period of four months. So let me explain the situation. At the beginning of the year, Mr. Quinn, who is head of Waits and Measures, had announced that he was going to retire in six months. This is a very highly trained position. You have to be trained in the, to do this and it's state approval. The person who's been selected by the commissioner is Mr. Dakota Ullar and he happens to be in the audience. And, and we only had a part-time position. As a part-time position, Mr. Ullar was, you know, didn't need our, our permission to hire him. But in order to get through this training, this highly qualified training and in order to do it in a six-month period of time instead of a year, Mr. Ullar needs to work on a full-time schedule. And although as a part-timer, he can work for 40 hours until he reaches 1,400 hours, over 1,400 hours. And then technically the IRS says, guess what? You're a full-time employee anyway. But this, rather than take a risk of any injury and having him given the opportunity to have insurance, I, I'm recommending that we cover, that we allow him to become a full-time position, that this department be allowed to make the part-time position full-time for four months and then it will fall back to a part-time position. There's enough funding in there to carry the salary that he's currently being paid through this period. And it just allows him to get insurance beginning March 1st.
Motion to approve, but I would like to make it retroactive to the date that he actually started.
Okay, we have, we have a motion.
I'd say January 1st, but I don't know what day you started.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to do, to back to the first, the day he started, like a, going back as if he was full-time back then. Do we, and we have a second. Any other discussion?
Yes. Where is his training consisting, consists of, well, maybe I should say, where is he being trained at?
By Mr. Quinn.
So he's being trained.
He's being trained by Mr. Quinn.
He's not going anywhere or?
No, it's my understanding the state is very short on trainers and they have such high respect for Mr. Quinn that they think that he's one of the best trainers in the state and that they would like to send people to him. So this is what I've seen in some correspondence that's been shared with me and I can turn around and, and forward that on. I just didn't think there was a.
So he's been trained for the past two months by Mr. Quinn and he just continue, regardless, he'd continue on. Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion?
I, I would like to thank Mr. Novak for his gracious offer to make this retroactive because I'm well aware that Mr. Ullar gave up a full-time job with benefits to start in January. So I think that's the appropriate thing to do.
Okay. Thank you for the comment. Anybody else with any comments or discussion? Okay, with that I call. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carried. Thank you very much for considering that. Okay. Now we move on to the appointment for Alcohol Beverage Commission. So now we have five names and I don't know if anybody's had a time to, to review. We had these in our packet a month ago. Hassan, the Baglia, the Beja, thank you. I don't know why I put the L in there. Kevin Kazlowski, Mark Kendall, John Stimley and Matt Sikorsky.
President, motion to, motion to appoint.
Microphone.
Motion to appoint John Stimley, senior as an Alcohol Beverage Commission, just for purposes of this comes-up discussion. He's on two taverns in Michigan City. This is not Johnny Stimley, Jr., this is Johnny Stimley, senior, his father.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
I just want to add to that, that Mr. Stimley has served on this board previously.
So how much time is this appointment for? Four years, one year?
One year.
Thank you.
No, maybe take that back.
Two years.
Two years, sorry.
Very soon.
Okay. I thought it was one year.
Mr. President.
One year. Thank you. So it's just one year. Yes, Mr. Cunningham.
I'd like to nominate Matthew Sikorsky. And I'd like to read a few excerpts from his letter since nobody received it until this evening. He's previously served eight years on the Alcohol Beverage Commission and was, would have continued except he was elected to the Springfield Township Board. Could serve two lucrative positions, so he stepped down. He's no longer on the Springfield Township Board and would be eligible. His family and he had run a business in La Porte County for 70 years. His wife has been a county employee and employee of the school system and he did send his letter in a timely fashion and asked that it be forwarded to all seven members. And, and I actually got to know Matt, he ran against me in 2010 and you get to know somebody pretty well when you go into all the pancake breakfast with the same person. So I would more than happy to nominate him.
So we have a nomination. Do we have a second to that nomination?
Second.
And we have a second, thank you. Any other nominations at this time? I closed the nominations, so now what I suggest that we do, if everybody agrees, is that I think we do it by roll call and we name one of the two candidates as the, for the position. So with the auditor's office, please give us a roll call.
Councilman Giegelski.
Johnny Stimley.
Councilman Keel. Councilman Cunningham.
Matt Sikorsky.
Councilman Novak.
Sikorsky.
Councilman Mullenauer.
John Stimley, senior.
And Councilman Karanka.
Matt Sikorsky.
Have five Sikorsky, two Stimleys.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, Mr. President, could you please explain why we're making this appointment so late in time?
Yes.
Briefly, please?
Yeah. We, we're the last ones to get to appoint somebody because the mayors of each city get to vote before we do and we didn't get the answer until after our last meeting. So this is our next opportunity, this late in the year. Sorry, but that's how it occurred. Okay, moving on. Now we move on to some old business. I'm going to ask our attorney to give us a report on the search for recruiting agency for human resources director and then the Integritas contract.
Okay, so the, both boards gave Mr. Jones and myself the task of going out and talking to some recruiting agencies. And Mr. Jones and I have settled and want to bring forth to y'all, and he's going to bring to the commission this week, Integritas. They're in South Bend, they do a lot of recruiting for HR and they do a lot of recruiting for accounting. They have a number of folks in the pipeline. They're local. They do, they have worked with other municipalities, South Bend Schools and other municipalities, and they seem to be a good fit. Typically, they, their fee is 30% of the salary, but they've agreed to a, a one-time fee, in, in this case of $17,000, their recruiting fee. The, the rub is that the market for HR and what we're looking for with a county our size and the duties is that the salary range, if you're going to be competitive in the market, is going to be between $90,000 and $120,000. Y'all are going to have to fund that type of position at that type of amount. Otherwise, I don't see any foe, any reason in going forward and paying $17,000 for a recruiter because you're not going to find one for 60 or 70 or $80,000. They were clear and specific as to that. You're just not going to get the quality of candidate that we need in La Porte County. I've heard a lot of discussion from Mr. Giegelski this evening about working on diversity and hiring and looking at possible, you know, maybe there are certain jobs within the county that might not need a college degree. I've heard, I've heard discussions that we really need to take a look at how we classify our employees because it's, you know, we have all these different classifications and they, they do with the state also, but we really, you know, they were done in the late, in the late 70s and early 80s. And so we need somebody that's going to do that. You know, we're a self-insured entity. We have somebody that needs to be really strong in benefits and to deal with health insurance, workers' compensation and all those things. And that, those are skills that you just can't get at the $60,000, $70,000 range. And that's what we've been told. So do you have any other questions of me?
I just want to make sure that we're clear whether we're looking for a motion of support or is this just informational only?
Well, y'all, well, we've been crushing the commission's professional budget. So this is something you all are eventually going to have to fund, $17,000. So yes, we're, we're going to want to support if the, if the commission goes forward to sign the contract, but you all have to have some type of open discussion about whether we're going to have to do something with the classification of the employee and the salary range because we're going to be making, this person's going to be in a salary range that's higher than a lot of folks within the county.
Mr. Novak first.
I'd like, well, I'm going to make a motion to, of support for the $17,000 to be taken out of the commissioners' professional services at this time because we did not appropriate it, but it authorizes them to move forward with it. And then that we have some more discussion this next, before our next meeting or at our next meeting regarding the salary. Obviously, it's, it's an eye-opener that, you know, that obviously this position's been underpaid, so that's where I'm at.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and second, but any other discussion at this time, Mr. Keel?
Earlier this month, I attended the AIC conference in Indianapolis and they had a three-hour seminar on HR. And I attended that and afterwards I walked up to the panelists and I asked them, you know, is what we're paying now, is that normal? The number of staff that we have now, is that normal based off of the number of employees we had? And you could kind of see their eyes popping a little bit that, that this was not normal. So this is definitely something I think that matches what you've said and what we're thinking that we need to make some changes here. So, thank you.
Let's not spend the $17,000 unless we're all open about really looking at this as something that can be done. So I think you really need to have an open discussion tonight before you decide to tell the commission to put their names on the dotted line because otherwise they're going to waste $17,000.
I just want to, I just want to add that I also appreciate Mr. DiMartino's, y'all going to have to fund this comment, so.
Do we need a Mr. President? Karanka, please.
So coming from private industry and, and working in, in a company that's, has about as many employees as the county does, what Mr. DiMartino is saying, is recommending is quite in line with what a government entity for a large company would be. We, we all know that on a regular basis that government salaries tend to be somewhat less than what the private industries are. But where we're at right now is probably so far less that we're not going to see any sort of chance of recruiting somebody decent.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make a comment before I do?
If you look back on the history of the position, we had about nine applicants the last time around. One of them was from somebody inside the county jail. We've narrowed it down to four and one of those four withdrew. So the truth of the matter is, if we weren't satisfied with anybody we got for $60,000 or $70,000, then we're going to have to bite the bullet and pay some money to get some applicants. Maybe we have to get somebody from out of the area, but you're not going to get anybody to move from out of the area to take a $65,000 job or $72,000 job.
Anybody else before I comment? I'm going to, my comments are similar, also in the private sector, also been involved with government sector, but in all seriousness, this is somebody who's going to help, we, we need this person to help lead us through a couple of different things. The diversity is one of the things that we've discussed earlier and whether or not we're doing enough to reach out into those communities has been of question and discussion in the past. But the other part is, is we really need somebody with experience. And when we did have the interviewees, there was one or two people, there was about one person that I thought that might have had the experience, but we also saw this person jump from one job to another for $1,000. So it was not somebody that we were going to keep even if we did decide to hire that person. So I think, I think I'd like to offer a recommendation to go between 90 and 110,000 as our, as our salary offer commensurate upon experience. So those were my thoughts.
My, my motion was to put it on next month's agenda.
So your motion is to put it on next month's agenda? Okay.
You just stated, we have a committee, so the committee's going to have to decide. It's not just this council here. So we, we can all say a number and it's not worth it.
I just mean, I throw it out there. Thank you very much.
Shall we meet?
No, that's fine. Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. So we have a motion of support to put it on our next meeting or workshop before our meeting or an executive session with the commissioners. What is it that we're talking about? I want to be sure, clear.
Whatever, whatever we need to.
What's the appropriate action for?
The appropriate action today is that you're going to do, just to do a motion to, to support for the commission to go ahead and sign the contract and that you'll end up, you know, having to replenish the, funding the $17,000 for the agency.
Okay. And then.
And then when we need to have a meeting regarding setting the salary, we'll do that. But we, I think we're doing the approval of the 17 based on the fact, we know that it's going to fall within the 90 to 120.
Okay. As long as that's our understanding, I want to make sure we're all good. So, so we have a motion of support to, to allow the commissioners to move forward and and suggest they pay for it out of their, uh, fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries, thank you. On the second one, this, uh, was requesting additional appropriation from ARP for the volunteer fire departments in LaPorte County. I believe technically we need to take it off the table.
Motion to take it off the table.
We have a motion to take it off the table, do we have a sec, we have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's now back on the table. What would anybody like to do at this point?
I'd like a motion to approve, and then I'll explain after.
We have a motion to approve the hundred and sixty thousand, and we have a second. Um, we have discussion time, so Mr. Novak, please.
So, being the chairman of the Firefighters Association, the Fire Chiefs Association of LaPorte County, we've had a lot of discussions since our last meeting on this. The first round of ARP funds that went out did not have restrictions on them, and there were some things that we needed to clear up and clarify on, um, our end before we move forward. That's why I did a motion to table last month. I think we've got those taken care of, and, uh, and I think we have some things in place. The, um, the document that Chief Snyder spoke of, where everybody signed something, is actually for this round. It wasn't for the previous round. It was in July, I think he presented it, the budget hearings, um, that everybody signed as to what it'll be done. And then, in between last month and this month, we've asked Mr. DeMartino to create a document that everybody's gonna have to sign, um, and if you could.
I, I wish I could, uh.
Not reading.
The document, the document was circulated.
I think everybody's seen it.
We, and we've made the changes based on the comments that were made by individual council members.
Just a few safeguards to tighten up.
Right.
Um, what it can be used for, what it can't be used for.
We want the funds to be used for equipment, we want the funds to be used for training, and we want the funds to be used to support the fire department, but we don't want the funds to be used to, uh, pay people bonuses and things along those lines.
In the future.
Yes.
Right.
And, uh, we also want, uh, the, the folks who are getting the money to attest that they are not under any investigation from any agency or anything that's looking at impropriety in the department.
And, and just to clarify, after researching and talking to a lot of the departments, none of those fall into that category. I was gonna say at this time, I mean, 'cause you, you, you never know what tomorrow brings, but none that I even know of, so I just wanna report that.
Any other comment? Mr. Keel?
Um, for the sake of everyone's benefit, I'm gonna read through, uh, what Mr. DeMartino circulated for that, that contract, just so we're clear on all the details. Um, it reads, "The LaPorte County Council has appropriated ten thousand dollars for each of the sixteen volunteer fire departments. A department accepting these funds agrees that the funds shall only be used for one, equipment, two, training, and three, education. These funds are not to be utilized for pay, bonuses, retention, or any other payment to individual firefighters." Um, and then the person's affirming that, one, that the funds will only be used for the proper purposes identified above, and two, that the department is not under any investigation by any state or federal agency. Um, I would propose that we add an additional provision that they report back to us on what it gets spent on. There's no way of us knowing that they're in compliance with those provisions without them reporting back to us.
What is, what is it?
I think, I think you already heard that, that you can have the Fire Chiefs Association doing that, but, um, what if they, you've heard a number of departments saying that they're gonna use this for a capital improvement fund. So how, how would you want them to do that?
Would we want that as we did last year prior, at, at the budget hearings? I mean, that's July, I'm sure.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna probably get another request at some point before, I believe it's before July that they have to ask for any, uh, public safety lit distributions. Um, and then we have to make a decision before September, because those distributions from public safety lit for volunteer fire departments comes out before it's split out to the municipalities. So you'll see the request from the fire departments that gets determined by us in September, and then later on it will be distributed in twenty twenty-four out to the other municipalities and then the county.
Can I comment, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
To, to, to the. I'm just messing. To the degree that money is fungible, I'm not sure where the, uh, fire departments have to deposit these monies, but ultimately, how would you, how would you know if, um, the training, um, you spend the money on training, but they don't spend ten thousand on training in something, some other area? I, I, I'm not saying they're going to, I'm not, I, I have no interest, this is completely your matter, but to the degree you're discussing reporting, um, unless you see their entire budget or the entire amount they spent or something, or have a financial report that says, where you could see, oh, what they spent last year on all these things and what they spent this year, and the, the ten thousand we gave them, look at this, they got an extra five thousand for retraining because of us, and an extra five thousand for equipment, everything's cool. To the degree that money's fungible, you have, we know a way of, of technically knowing you're getting what you're looking for, it seems to me.
Jits is true.
My comment would be very simply this, that this is such a small piece of the pie for the volunteer fire departments that if their fire chief attests and it goes to the countywide committee and they don't see any red flags, I'm not overly worried about it. I mean, I think what, what we have is self-reporting. The firemen themselves are gonna know if someone's getting paid, and he's not supposed to be getting paid out of that fund, someone's gonna rat him out, that's the truth of the matter, because they're not all gonna get paid. They're, not all these firemen are gonna get paid out of a ten thousand dollar check. So I don't think we need to make this more complicated and necessary, as Mr. Yagowski said. We don't need to hear from sixteen fire chiefs. We need to hear from one collective person that's overseeing this, Mr., I have co, confidence in Mr. Novak, Mr. Snyder, or whoever fills those positions with the, uh, countywide organization. They wanna see their countywide fire departments doing the right thing. And I think with the, uh, agreement that, um, Costler, uh, DeMartino has drawn up, gives them more guidelines, and they understand that somebody's gonna swear that this is accurate, this is what they spent their money on. And, but what it's not like, we're giving them a hundred thousand dollars. Most of these departments have ten thousand dollars, basically as making up what they lost during COVID on their pancake breakfast and their fish fries and things that they couldn't do. They're so far behind, I think Mr. Novak will tell you, some of these places just got decimated because they couldn't raise funds.
I, I just wanna add to that, that we're worried about trusting them. And you gotta understand, when your house is on fire, you're running out, they're running in. All your valuables are in it, you're trusting them with your children's lives, with their family, with their pets, with everything you have in your house for them to come and save everything you got. And I think, and, and, and these are firefighters, I mean, being a retired firefighter, and I'm gonna jab at my law enforcement buddies, you know, these are firefighters, so I mean, you know. Anyway, just giving you guys a hard time.
They're volunteers.
And they're volunteers at that. It, they do a, they do a fantastic job, and I circulated out the thing, um, yesterday, I think the state did a report that if we did not have volunteer firefighters, the state of Indiana would have to, they, they cover, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, like one point, so many billions of dollars would have to be generated in taxes to make up the shortfall that the volunteer firefighters are providing for this county. Four point five, thank you, see, I told you, see how they are? Okay, thank you.
And I completely agree with the need for funding volunteer fire departments. Uh, my brother is a paid volunteer, or paid firefighter in Elkhart. Um, I hate to think that we would be depriving firefighters from any, uh, revenue to make sure that they can do their jobs safely and effectively. But I do think that we owe it to our constituents and taxpayers to be able to say how these things, how these decisions that we're making up here are benefiting from, benefiting them. And without knowing how the funds are spent, it's hard for us to be able to say that. And, and even if it's as simple as that they're saving it for a, an apparatus in the future, um, maybe that's a good valid thing for them to be saving for, but we deserve to know about that as part of this process.
It would seem to me, if I may, Mr. President, it, it would seem to me you would almost have to effectively turn it into a grant program, and, uh, I don't wanna editorialize, but it is a relatively small amount of money, and it's not something my office would be thrilled about administering for twelve different departments for ten thousand for. So I, I, you know, I think you just have to consider that.
I would.
That, that notion, there's a, probably a balance somewhere between, or maybe you guys are arriving at it.
Uh, I would add one more thing, which is that we should consider in the future, because this is gonna be coming back up probably later this year for, uh, when they make a request on a public safety lit. Um, there are two townships right now that contract with, uh, fire departments that are outside of LaPorte County. Those townships, they're paying into this public, or they're paying into county tax dollars, but they are not receiving any benefit from this, and that would be, uh, Hudson Township and Johnson Township. Also, the city of LaPorte and the city of Michigan City are paying taxes as well, and they also don't benefit from these distributions. So it, it may be worthwhile thinking about whether or not this is the right way to distribute funds.
Receive their own.
Michigan City.
Public safety.
But we're distributing ARP funds right now.
Okay. All right.
There are no volunteer fire departments within the city of LaPorte or within the city of Michigan City, so that's why it's lim, it's not, there's no career department. City of LaPorte and the city of Michigan City are not eligible for these funds. Just wanna clarify.
Clarification also, I, I believe, uh, Mr. Keel, that, uh, anybody in any of these townships can go to their volunteer fire department and over their trustee and say, I wanna see how the money was spent.
That's not true.
Why wouldn't they be able to do that?
Not all of these volunteer fire departments are run by the township, some of them are independent nonprofits.
Which one of the sixteen are independent nonprofits?
Cool Spring.
LaCrosse Volunteer Fire Department, my hometown.
Several.
And they do an excellent job, they do actually report to the town of LaCrosse as part of their contract with the town, their annual financials. So in that case, actually, I suppose a taxpayer would be able to see that, because they could go in and request that report.
That's what I would suggest that they do.
Not all are like that.
I would suggest that they do that, and the first time a volunteer fire department says, no, we're not gonna tell you how we spent the money, then they come back and tell us, that's an issue. I doubt it, that's an issue.
I just wanna clarify that, I assure you, knowing Chief Snyder and, and the membership, you will get a report back as to how this money was spent from each one of these departments. That's, I don't think any mayor has any issue with that, so.
Okay, I'd like to move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays?
Mr. President, you're appropriating, we could do roll call vote.
Okay, um, we did not mention in the, where we're appropriating the funds, uh, although it does say here that we're appropriating it.
ARP.
So I.
Only advertised out of one.
Yeah, no, it's an appropriation, you do a roll call vote. Mr. Karanka's.
Thank you very much, because, okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Yagowski. Councilman Mullenauer.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no aces, no aces.
Thank you. We're moving on to number three, the LaPorte County Public Defender. I believe Mr. Bragey is supposed to be with us. Come on. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, my understanding, and the, the, the purpose for today is to create a transfer of the insurance fund into a separate category. Apparently it was all placed in the personal services. Uh, the number that was provided for health insurance was an estimate without knowing how many people would apply or use the insurance. Uh, as it turned out, of the twenty-three people, only ten people are currently using the, um, insurance. And, and to just kind of further explain, those funds are part of our reimbursement program. So any of the public defenders who do not handle misdemeanors, that money will be returned fifty percent back to the county when we do our quarterly submissions.
So the insurance piece will be part of the reimbursement?
Yes, as long as the, as long as the program qualifies and as long as the individual public defender qualifies under the caseload requirements, it will be reimbursed.
Mr. Yagowski.
Um, so when the money's returned, the money's returned back to your, it's not returned to general fund?
It's returned to the general fund.
Okay, so, all along, because this was not passed by any council member, I suffered a lot of misinformation. I don't know how the insurance came out without a council approval, but it didn't. But anyway, when, when the issue came up, I had no problem with getting insurance, the problem I have is how we're doing it. Did we get ten ninety-nine forms if the county wants to employ those people like they do the prosecutor's office? Because prosecutors have gone from full-time to part-time, part-time to full-time, but we, we give them insurance, but they're employed by the kind of, I don't, I, I'm uncomfortable with this ten ninety-nine form, because it's never been used in LaPorte County, and I will challenge anybody when it has been. Uh, so, again, if, 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 if this is the case that the council wants to go with it, I have no problem with it, but it needs to be done the proper way.
Well, uh, I, I, as, as far as that goes, I, I'm not gonna get outside my lane as to how it should be handled internally, but, but in fact, uh, part-time employees have received insurance in the past.
If you can tell me where they are, it's fine.
Prosecutors.
I said, again, let me try that one conversation, but they were employees, they were not ten ninety-nine. So I don't disagree with you, so don't, it's not prosecutors, they are ten ninety-nine.
You said who were part-time?
I said, and I, I started my conversa, and I started my conversation.
Clarify that.
I know, Mr. Novak, and I started my conversation, saying that they were employees.
That they're paid their payroll.
Can I, can I, can I ask, so.
I'm gonna need a public defender.
Yes. So there is a, an attorney general opinion out there that talks about prosecutors, that the prosecutors are not actually county employees, they're actually employees of the prosecutor or the prosecutor's office. Now, Mr. Bragey, I don't, I don't know quite how the public defenders council works, but can you explain how that works and why you actually put this in your budget and we're coming to the council at budget regarding this health insurance? Are there, are there any counties that are doing this? Can you educate us? Thank you.
They're, well, under the, the, under the public defender program in Indiana, you can be, you, first off, you establish a board, and we have a public defender board. The board then makes a determination as to whether the employees would, whether there would be employees of a public defender office with staff and office and all the, you know, telephone, all the circumstances, or they can engage, uh, lawyers on a contract basis. The public defenders in our system are on a contract basis. We have one, actually one full-time person, uh, the rest are part-time persons, so we have twenty-two part-time and one full-time. Those public defenders, because they're on a contract, they do not get any, um, reimbursement for secretarial, for office space, for stationary, for postage, uh, for any of the different, uh, expenses that they have. Last year, um, the public defender board met, uh, this would have been, uh, within a month or two of the, um, of the budget hearings, and we had a long conversation about our inability to get people to work. I think I brought that before the council on a number of different occasions, because, frankly, it's not, it's kind of a crummy job, and, and we've had a lot of turnover, uh, because of the circumstance of somebody. For example, the highest level of somebody on a public defender gets a contract for forty-five thousand dollars. Why the forty-five thousand dollars, they gotta pay all their expenses out of that. So the amount of money that they actually net is, is not as significant. So as we have seen other counties provide benefits, for example, uh, Porter County provides benefits, health insurance. A number of other counties provide health insurance. When we announce.
Bragey, can I ask you?
Yeah.
Does, are Porter County's public defenders situated the same as LaPorte County?
No.
They're, they're different?
They're different.
How, can you explain that?
They're part-time, and they are not fully reimbursed, reimbursed because they don't follow all the guidelines. They're, they're a, they're part-time, uh, and, uh, but they get benefits, but it, but once again, they are not part, they have not qualified under the caseload requirements to be part of the system. And that's the difficult part. It's the qualification part which makes this, running this program so difficult. It's an enormous bureaucracy, uh, as, in terms of what, you know, everything is done by numbers. It has nothing to do with time you spend. Um, you can handle so many cases. If you try all those cases, it's a lot of time. If you don't try any of those cases, it's not nearly as much time. Uh, but it's all numbers, and, um, so when we, when our board recommended that, and I, I, Mr. Co, we invited Mr. Cunningham to come down as our liaison to that meeting and kind of lay out all the problems we were having, uh, that's when we, uh, suggested we put that as a request to the, to the, uh, council. Now, where I believe there was a problem, I was scheduled for a budget hearing, and I was called and told in advance not to come, that the, the, that the council had already taken it up. So, you know, I'll take responsibility for that, that everything may have not been explained as well to the, to the councils, maybe as it should have, but that's how it occurred. As a result, when, when I heard from Mr. As a result, when, when I heard from Mr. Stables, we had a number of conversations and there was a number of different uh, confusions as trying to get the program. One of the ways was, how do we pay them? Well, the, since the, each public defender gets a contract payment every month, our suggestion was that they simply subtract from that contract payment the amount of the cost to the county for that insurance. I, I.
Their portion, I'm sorry, their, their portion of it, right?
Their portion of it, yeah. So, so, you know, just to pick a number out of the sky, uh, a, a, if their, their, their cost was, the county's cost, excuse me, their cost was two hundred dollars of the portion of the premium, that would be subtracted from their contract payment every month when they submitted, because I submit a claim form every month for the, for the public defender's contract. That may be a difficulty, I don't know, but that was the way we suggested it. But right now, until the whole thing kind of gets straightened out, the public defenders are paying them portion by writing the check to the auditor for those, for that amount. We obviously would just prefer that we just would get, those public defenders that are using, just get a net amount, but that's, that's kind of how it's all been developed up to this point.
Is it?
Mr. Novak.
Is it possible? I was going to look at our attorney, but I guess we got a lot of attorneys here. Is it possible to, for us to, for, to cover the part-time part that we, we know to, like the prosecutors to say, they're part-time employees and go on a limb and say that, but these are special and they're contracted with ten ninety-nines, but they're part-time. Is it just a reclassification on our part?
No, it's an ethical problem for the public defenders and here's why. A lot of counties that have employees have a, what they call a, a conflict panel. It's a whole range of, of, of lawyers that handle when there's a conflict. If we are employees, offices that have more than one public defender would be in a conflict position concerning cases that would be handled by other public defenders. And it would require us to hire a whole nother staff of public defenders. That's why we set it up. Because if you have a contract, for example, public defender A has a, has a, a, a public defender. A co-defendant is represented by another public defender. If both of those public defenders are employees in the same staff, it's a conflict and it has to be given in the conflict council, which means we have to go beyond our twenty-three people to find somebody else. And that's why it was set up in that fashion.
Is there any other comment? Mr. Keel?
Yeah.
I'll take responsibility because I was the liaison and we, the budget hearings got way ahead and we talked about this and said, it's all a matter of, just like the police and fire, if you can't compete in the marketplace, you can't get people to do the job. That was the biggest problem we had. And one of those things was, I don't, I'm not asking for a pay increase. Everybody else was getting pay increases. He said, I would rather have the option for them to get the insurance because that will allow me to keep my employees. And that's what we approved during the budget hearing. And he was, he was a hundred percent right. Tim or someone called and said, they voted, there was at least four votes that we were going to do that. And that's why he was called and told not to come to meetings. Is that correct?
I don't think, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I understood because you and I had talked what exactly we were doing. I know that insurance was never brought up at the budget hearing. That is what is creating the confusion. It, the term, this is for insurance for the public defenders.
I concur with that.
Mr. Yagowski brought the motion up and said, hey, we can just knock them out now. They need this money and, and let's do it.
And we agreed to the increase, right. Was there an insurance question?
Right.
But.
Looked at the benefit meetings, so it was never brought up.
It was never stated insurance.
Well, if you want to give us all that money that was appropriate, that was, I thought was for insurance and you want to give it to a compensation, we'd be happy to take it.
Funny, it's, it's a ten ninety-nine, so we have to figure out what we're going to do, that we don't, a policy that we don't have in our, we, we have to change our policy. We just can't say that you're going to be the person that's going to get away with it.
But I think if, if, and Justin showed it to us yesterday at the, at the agenda review thing, I, I think our policy needs to be updated anyway. Period. Just by looking at it, but not, not to mention just this, so.
Well, you're also, and Mr. Rosenbaum can speak to this, uh, you're also going to have to change and add money to their contracts because the county portion of their premium is actually compensation to them.
Taxable benefit.
Well.
So, so you, you know what I mean? So that's something that we're going to have to look at. So it's just not real easy.
Just like when we have reimbursed through cars or anything out of ten ninety-nine people, then becomes an insurance that you're going to have to claim that as a taxable amount of money.
Right.
You know, they're going to have to claim. They are, you, you, you're, not you personally, but you're.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. The, the mechanics of it, you know, however it, it's worked out. But I can say to you that since we put this out there that we have the ability to get insurance, we have had a whole number of people inquiring for open positions.
I, I need a job. I need insurance.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's.
Okay, um, we had Mr. Keel wanted to speak, if I let him, please.
I, I feel indulged, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Bragey. One, so you're the chief public defender, correct? And the public defender board contracts with you to provide that service, correct? And is the number of public defenders fixed? So that we know that there's not going to be a whole bunch more getting insurance or a whole bunch less getting insurance?
It's only, it's only fixed by the, by the, uh, council appropriating money for the budget. Uh, we have, I, I, I've been a public defender for almost twenty-nine years. And we've gone from nine people to now twenty-three people, actually twenty-four if you take them all as part-time. And we're having trouble, I could, I could spend hours telling you why there's a problem, but there's, the, the amount of appointments is, is increasing dramatically and has been increasing dramatically. And the problem is, it's not a question of whether my people can do those appointments. It's a question if they do those appointment, you lose the fifty percent reimbursement. That's the problem. So every year when I come back here at budget time, I bring the statistics and I say, you know, for example, just give you an example. Level six felonies. I have to report on a quarterly basis. In other words, they have, they have not only have a yearly requirement, they have a quarterly requirement. We ran out of level six public defenders in the first week of February. Five weeks into the twelve-week uh, quarter. So those are the issues that keep, continue to come up. So when I say I can't tell you there's going to be any more, I can't tell you that. I, I could tell you that it's going to be up to this council whether they approve it or not. But, because I don't hire them without a budget for them. So if I don't have money, I don't hire them.
And so there's a, there's a minimum number of hours or, or cases that these public defenders are working in order to be qualified for this?
Yeah, well, there's two, two requirements, an experience requirement and a caseload requirement. For example, roughly speaking, uh, public defenders in Superior Court One and public defenders in Lowport Circuit Court could handle forty cases a year. Now, that doesn't mean necessarily forty, because they can only do, they have a rolling quarter. So they can't take more than ten in a quarter, even if in another quarter, they took less than ten. That's another rule that the commission has made. So we, we are on a, we're on a compliance basis on a quarter by quarter basis.
And so my understanding is the, there's ten individuals from your office that are already receiving insurance benefits. How did that happen when we haven't made this, this transfer yet?
Well, the, the auditor, I think, has been paying those with this problem hanging out there. We thought, I thought, that we had an appropriated amount of money for insurance. And that's the way I handled it in this first quarter.
When did you become aware that that wasn't the case?
Conversations with Mr. Stables.
Thank you. I think that's everything.
I just, I just want to, there was a report and I'm not sure if I received it from your office or if it came through Mr. Cunningham. But when you, when you have a prosecutor, when somebody goes to court, they have a prosecutor and they have a defendant, attorney, defense attorney. The prosecutors are paid a lot more money, even though they're part-time. They get benefits. Public defender is paid less and gets no benefits. And you're, and, and the thing that, the, it's my understanding this was from the Supreme Court, they want to even that out more so that you have the same. You don't want it to create an illusion that there's a difference in what they're getting, they're, that they're getting the equal representation. Did I, did I?
There, there's a pay parity provision that the, that the Public Defender Commission statewide has established. We went through a, uh, a pay parity audit, uh, last year. And we made it, for example, I currently am not being paid what I'm supposed to be paid, but they've not, they've not required it. I think Mr. Cunningham may remember being on the commission, there was a one point where they demanded that I take a raise. I have not applied, I never applied for these until they come back and tell me that if you don't make those changes, then we're going to deny your reimbursement. So they look at our compensation, for example, they asked me what a part-time prosecutor makes. I have to, last year I had to submit the prosecutor's budget to them. And then they make a determination whether there's pay parity. The trouble is when they do the deter, determination of pay parity, they don't include all those expensive things like copy machines and secretaries and office and all those other things. They just look at the gross amount of money paid to a part-time prosecutor versus a mo, a gross amount of money paid to a part-time uh, public defender. They, they, they review our situation and the only time I know we have a problem is when they come back and tell me there's a problem. So, you know, they, they, they have legislation, uh, up now to require some more changes to lower the caseload requirements, so that we have to take less cases. So this is constantly evolving. And when they come back to me and say, we got to have this, I come back to the council and, and give you the option of getting the reimbursement or not getting the reimbursement. You could run the system on less money and with less people than we have now, but then you don't get the reimbursement, so it costs you more money on a net basis.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Yagowski first.
That's right. And again, I totally understand, we've talked about these over the years of your funding and all that stuff, so it's that, don't, please don't misunderstand my point. I have no problem with you receiving insurance. It's how the methodology is going to happen. And again, I know you, that's not for you to worry about, but there's no way I can vote for this tonight because we do not have a policy to pay ten ninety-nine employees to do this. If, 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 if we change the policy and there's a separate meeting on that, that's a different conversation. I'm not against the, the insurance at all, but I am against the idea that we're changing policy mid-term, when we, when we have not done that in the past for a ten ninety-nine employee.
How about, how about if I amend my motion to, that it would, this would also require a, an update to the policy?
This is the attorney, I guess.
Any audits?
Keep in thought.
Let's give him a moment. Mr. DiMartino, the question is, is it appropriate to amend, um, the motion uh, that we, that this is subject to changing or updating the policy?
It's a lot more involved than that. I don't think you can make a decision tonight. I think it's something that we need to look at.
So we have a motion on the floor in a second. Do we need them to withdraw their motion and then table this?
No, anytime you can ask for a table.
Pardon?
Anytime you can.
Anytime for a table?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so.
I want to move to the table. I do have two more questions.
Okay, we.
Okay, let's keep the discussion open before.
Just, yeah, for another moment.
Two more questions. One, um, how many cases approximately do you handle every year, your public defenders collectively?
Our public defenders? Probably about fifteen, eighteen hundred.
Okay, and who picks the public defenders? Who has the? Okay.
Well, I, I do, my board supervises me, but I, I do the actual selection.
Thank you.
Mr. President, motion to table.
Motion to table in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries to table. So this will be tabled one more time.
For clarification, that'll be tabled till next month's meeting? For, with a report?
It's going to be tabled until we can get an answer and, and we need to work on this. I need, yeah.
In the meantime, the ten employees or ten? Correct. Do they get insurance?
But I mean, it, just to reiterate, the thing that we can talk about to reassure the public defenders is Justin, I think, was going to state, the ten that are getting the insurance will continue to get the insurance.
We're not going to rename it on what's started.
They're just going to have to continue to write a check to the auditor's office for their portion.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bragey.
Just so it's clear, if I may, Mr. President. Just so it's clear, I mean, we, we had a, a, a discussion among a number of public officials at one point in time around the transition of the turn of the year where the understanding was, um, that the professional services money was fungible, so to speak, with being paid for health insurance. And so that was the conclusion that was reached, so.
I need to stop the conversation because we did table this and now it continues that conversation.
Well, okay, I thought that was outside that realm of theory, but okay.
I know, thank you for, Jesus. Okay, for enlightenment. All right, now we move on to appropriations, transfers and requests.
Mr. President, real quick on this conversation, because now we're into the money part. I, I don't know how we're able to, the council's able to appropriate money, the last paper on two seventeen to twenty-three, unless there's another sheet. General Fund's got a hundred nineteen thousand. We're about four million shy of another fund. I don't know how we're supposed to be able to go through this fund funding process tonight.
Are, are we on the first appropriation or is that a broader question?
No, it's a broader comment.
My broader comment to the whole thing, the council has to go with what we have. If we, if this states the numbers we have right now, we don't have enough money.
Can I, in, in that same line, can I ask, because I know there were several conversations among council members yesterday and today individually, but how did our numbers go from last month to this month? I mean, they're like, so I mean, coming in tonight's meeting.
It's a running balance.
We're not sure if last month was right or if this month was right.
And it's a running balance, Mr. Novak, right? It's generally a running balance.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't appropriate.
It's not, right, it's not projected, it's whatever.
Right, but we did not, we did not spend enough to justify the new balance from last.
Correct.
Okay.
The balances on the two seventeen date are accurate, the numbers that you were given. The difference between the three point eight, for example, in Lit one, 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 two and in January, and then again in February, if you did look back at the January funds balance, um, Vaughn had put on there that it was based on the twenty twenty-two budget and it did not take into consideration, because the budget had not rolled yet, it did not take into consideration any of the encumbrances, any appropriations or anything like that. And according to Lao, they said that in January that will happen often depending on when the budget goes. Um, the amounts today, as of two seventeen, are entirely correct.
We're going to have to review what was encumbered.
Would, would we be able to get a report of all of the encumbrances? Sure. Thank you.
But again.
We, we believe.
If we don't know, we, 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 we're going to appropriate to that money that we don't have.
We, we believe that you can get through this appropriation, listen, if you wanted to fund every single item, if you chose to fund every single item on here, since most of them are from Lit Public Safety or, or ARP, that the money, the money exists. I have a recommended way, if you decide you want to fund the first item, to split it up three ways and, and have it be funded.
Because I, my question to you then is, again, we, we've held a running to, a running balance, is what we did in the past. If you're going to do this to give this type of report out, then we're going to have to know everything that's involved in it. What money have we encumbered? What money are we, you know? This is a different methodology that we ever had, had before and we don't know where it came from. If it came from a Lao report, that's fine. I didn't have the same report in January of last year.
Well, we, we'll try to get you as much information as what we.
Chairman, would you, I'd like to ask Mr. Bishop to please come forward. I have a question for him regarding this. Uh, because the biggest one in question is the first one I did want to ask. When will this money be spent? We're talking about years from now, correct?
Uh, no, this is a community crossing money. This was bid out, um, and opened, uh, last February, or this February in the commission meeting. Low bid was Reeve Riley.
Okay, so when does it begin? Where do we need to make payments?
Uh, I would say your first payment, well, usually we start when the plan opens, so. Uh, I would say your first payment, usually we start when the plan opens, so they start paving in April. So your first payment would probably be May.
Motion to table.
So if we wanted to table this for a month, we still have time. Need to fund it.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion of support?
Well, you already gave me a motion of support. I came in front of the council, I believe, in August of last year for an commitment letter.
Second, the motion to table.
So we have a motion on the floor to table in a second. All those in favor to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Karanka, I thought you, I heard you say aye, so I'm just going to confirm that.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Needs to have his camera on if he's going to vote.
Oh, yeah, is there a possibility to get your camera back on while you're voting? Because that's part of our rule. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so that means that we go to the second item. Thank you very much. Although it's listed under LaPorte County Auditor, what happened was the the, actually, is Mr. Ira available to speak? If we can unmute him. Thank you. If you would care to make comment about the the request for the additional appropriations from the Lit Public Safety regarding the two probation officers.
Sure. The, from my understanding anyway, is that the two officers we were paying from our. Probation Officer Administrative User Fee Fund. That fund was going to be exhausted in January, so those two positions were converted to lit tax starting in January. So it's my, I I I didn't ask this, this is Vaughn, but I think it's my understanding, and Tim can help me. That the positions were created for this fund, but the fund was never given money. Does that make sense?
It's a little bit more than that. This fund did not have its own budget. So what happens when you don't have a budget, everything needs to be appropriated. So we can look into changing something like that towards next year, but however, in the meantime, because there's no budget, everything has to be appropriated. And these people who are going to be paid from this fund, specifically from this fund, need, we need to, we need to make the appropriation to pay for it out of this fund. Hopefully, I'm not double talking anyway, that everybody can understand clearly that fund dried up on one side, we're moving it to another fund. This is to be paid out over the year. So far, for the first quarter, it would be thirty-four thousand and change for the first three months. It is the pleasure of the council what we would like to do on how we we can say we can fund it. We know that we get six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars every month right now, so.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Novak. Do I have a second? Second, with the stipulation that it not exceed thirty-five thousand dollars per quarter. And do you have a problem with that?
Okay.
No, because it it falls under that. Any comment? Hearing none? We need to do a roll call.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Hey.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
And Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
Okay, we move on to the next one. LaPorte County Auditor has asked for additional appropriations from either Riverboat or the Lit for overtime pay. Particularly the overtime pay for their payroll people, am I correct?
Correct.
And the amount of three thousand, four hundred twenty dollars and thirty cents. What is the council's pleasure?
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Unbelievable. We have a second, so we have a motion to deny and we have a second. Do we have a conversation?
On a question, can the auditor explain?
Yes, please.
The letter went out that I think substantively explained to the council. From directly from Cheryl and payroll. I am in the office late until five or six at times, sometimes after six, and I have payroll people during the Christmas season into January because of. All of these different pay increases, ten percent, fifteen percent, we changed some. Bonuses hit twice a year, bonuses hit a year, and there's a bonus measurement. They were in the office late. We have payroll cycles that run every two weeks. And there's only so much time. If we give them comp time, they can't use it. It's like putting them on a treadmill or in a squirrel cage. This really, I would implore you to please pass this because it it just puts them in a position where then I say, okay, here's the comp time. And they can't use it and we we place this burden upon them ultimately with, you know. Late pay increases for employees and varying pay increases for different departments and we brought in the the new insurance company. As she pointed out in her letter, American Fidelity, that was totally screwed up process, quite frankly. Where they said it was going to be easier, but it created all these hiccups, so they were in the office fixing the American Fidelity screw-up. So I I would just implore you to please to please pass this.
Is this two employees in payroll department?
Correct.
Practically equally distributed seventeen hundred hours, approximately.
Uh, it's about sixty, it's about two-thirds to the to Cheryl and and one-third to sixty percent for one and forty percent for the other. I will point out that I am not asking for an overtime budget. I do not want my two payroll people to think that, oh, you know. We can, you know, run over whenever we want and he'll give us overtime. This is like a one-time basis. It has to do with what happened in December and and January specifically. I am I am purposely, not other departments have asked for overtime budgets. I'm not asking for discretion to give people overtime when I want to, but I am respectfully asking you to please pass this. These two women deserve this this money and this payout. They cannot use comp time and get the payroll out for 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 our employees.
Mr. Yagowski.
So there has to be something else. I've been met numerous years and we've given bonuses away. This is not difficult at the end of the year to do. I know what you're doing, what you're saying, what you're doing. Then we better start cross-training employees. This is brought up through numerous council members like Mr. Cunningham. We brought other people in from other areas because they don't, our caseloads are reduced in some areas at the end of the year. Or they are at the middle of the year when people are doing their taxes and so on and so forth. So that has not changed over time, but if we start this policy practice, like you said, this will, this is not a practice the county has endorsed or embraced. We we give the period of time off. It's happened in other departments. You know, if there's an insurance issue, that's a separate case, one separate case. But all the other stuff, your your department has done the same thing previous auditors have done. So that's why I'm not against the idea of paying this. We should use the power, you already know what we have, use the appropriate people at a time.
I will say, I appreciate that comment, actually.
I'm sorry. I'd like to have Mr. Novak.
So what what was that, were you done?
He's done.
Not a question, answer.
Okay, so one of the other things that. Why I would possibly be inclined to support this is the fact that there's two people in there, one is transferring to another department. Am I correct? So so there's going to be one senior person there, a new person coming into that role. It's going to be that much harder for this senior person to take off at this particular time.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good point. I hadn't thought of that, frankly, but that's it, that's a good.
Feel free to use it.
Okay, I'd also like to make one comment also. Cross-training somebody for payroll is very different than cross-training someone for the accounts payable system. So or if we're down into another department. So I just think that that expertise is is very difficult and that would be the only reason why I would. You know, it's not the only reason why I would support it. I've also been there, seen them and and worked with them on trying to get some of these things straight, so.
Can I say one more thing, please?
We we would normally have you up at the podium to to answer things, so yes.
Um, this is not per se relevant, but we did have a similar situation last year and the council did vote an overtime payout. Last year, I don't know whether you did or didn't, Mr. Councilman Yagowski. I will say in fairness to you, I think that you make a good point, which is that as we see this transition of someone leaving payroll and someone coming in internally. You approved it earlier. I think cross-training is is critical and and that each person in that office needs to know every single function. Because if one of them is is unconscious, God forbid, for four weeks or what have you, we want the other to be doing everything. And and we realize that there there is an issue there and we we are going to address that, seek to address that issue here. So I want to acknowledge that your concerns around that.
Okay, so we have a a motion to deny, so vote is to deny it, a vote aye is to deny it, a vote nay is to. Be against denying it. So we like to, we need a roll call, please?
Councilman Keel.
Doing the math in my head here, figuring out what, so aye is for.
Aye is deny.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski. Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Nay.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Nay.
Councilman Novak.
Nay.
And Councilman Karanka.
Nay.
Five nays, two ayes.
So that motion doesn't carry. Would anybody like to entertain another motion?
I'd like to make a motion that it not exceed thirty-four thousand. Thirty-four hundred. Bear with me.
You're generous tonight.
Bear with. Thirty-four hundred and twenty dollars and thirty cents and that this is a one-time thing. And that the cross-training, as Mr. Stabo said, that he's going to work on that. And due to I, the only reason I take exception to or that agree with it is for the fact that with the change in the personnel, I agree. It's going to be very hard for them to take the time, so.
Mr. Novak, I would recommend that it come out of Riverboat, please.
Out of Riverboat.
Second, what he said.
So we have a motion in a second. I don't know if we need any further discussion, do we? If not, let's take another roll call, please.
Councilman Yagowski. Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Moving on to the next.
Thank you.
LaPorte County E nine one one. This is something that we've already given support for. Everything's been ordered. If you'd like to come up, you're more than welcome to come up. This is for appropriations and we, I think we may need to, we would like to entertain this by doing one at a time or we'd like to do it as a group.
It's a group thing.
That's a lot of roll call.
It's a lot of. I know, so I'm happy to do it as.
Motion to approve the upgrades to the nine-one-one center as stated on the.
And I believe the total.
What is the total?
Do you have exactly, if not, a.
Six hundred and five thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's my motion.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, wait, where are we taking it from?
Only one choice.
Oh, one choice is Lit Public Safety. Sorry, just want to make sure. I'm losing it too. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That total one more time, please.
Six oh five, six nine, three and twenty-one cents.
Correct. Thank you.
We need a roll call, please?
It's verified.
When do we expect this in?
March twenty-first. March twenty-first.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
And Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move on to the LaPorte County Sheriff requesting additional appropriation from the Lit Public Safety for patrol vehicles. Four hundred ninety thousand, what would the council like to do?
Mr. President, motion approved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Please make a roll call.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye, stating that there are eleven vehicles that didn't stay before.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. LaPorte County EMS requesting additional appropriation from either ARP, CCD or Riverboat or Lit or Public Safety Lit. For loose equipment, graphics, emergency lights, siren, for sixteen thousand, six oh six and for the twenty twenty-three Chevy Tahoe of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty. I just have a quick question. Is this replacing another vehicle?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve out of Public Safety Lit.
Second.
We have a motion in a second out of Public Safety Lit. Any discussion?
With the.
Yes.
There's not enough left.
We're not paying.
Vehicle comment.
We're not paying.
It'll be here by probably April.
So we have time and we're also not paying the two positions a year in advance, so it'll be monthly. So knowing that we're six hundred and fifty-five thousand, are we eligible to do this because we know that the money is coming? Okay, thank you.
Because we know the sheriff's cars are coming for a while.
When you looked at the, when you looked at the number as one point two versus one point three million, but you didn't, but you didn't appropriate. You're only doing thirty-five thousand a quarter for probation, so you have the money.
Thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Cunningham. So we have a a motion in a second.
Left after this.
And any discussion, further discussion?
You sure there's not enough?
Hearing none, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Keep it running.
Okay, moving on to, thank you very much for coming up. Moving on to LaPorte County Health Department, requesting additional appropriation from ARP, Riverboat or Lit for AEDs for the county buildings. Just want to make sure everybody had the same question. Can we go and get the funding from?
The Healthcare Foundation.
Healthcare Foundation, so I had a conversation with Maria today because they did have a grant open. It filled up, per her words, I think they gave out fifty AEDs. They all went to needy churches, schools, some volunteer fire departments, I think, applied for them. She said that the the grant is, I mean, it opened and closed that fast and she said that it is no longer available and that.
Schools are more needed than county or?
What's that?
Schools are more needed than county?
Absolutely, yeah. These particular schools were.
Okay.
For the record.
So the question comes to Mr. President is that the amount and every floor and all and so on and so forth. I have I have facilities that I employ three times the amount of county. They are, every floor has destiny. Okay, you go to the second floor for this or that. I I think the amount's excessive on one. Two, I think the also the thing is that the training part of it, the health department, this was brought up by Dr. Cora a few years back when he was commissioner. That about training and we still have not trained a lot of our employees unless that's happened since that I don't, I'm not familiar with.
I believe the LaPorte Fire Department, he left his training, doing like CPR training and everything else free to anybody in the community, so I'm sure they. EMS, no.
For employees? So all employees are trained or that want to be trained? Okay, because that was the problem we had before, that's why I'm asking, thank you.
Can we just, may I, can we just state how many AEDs that are in this number for the public?
How many are?
How many AEDs for seventy-five thousand?
Twenty-six.
Thank you.
This does not include the sheriff's department.
Does not include.
Sheriff's Department, but they are, these are also compatible with EMS's pads and leads and everything like that because that's imperative.
Practice a life pack unit, which is carried on the ambulances. It was requested by nine-one-one and EMS that would carry the same unit. They can walk in, unplug it, plug it into their unit, it's compatible. Their wifi enabled, as soon as they're activated, they transmit information on the patient, how many times it's, it had to shock, so.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Out of what? We recommend ARP on this one.
So we have a motion and a second. I didn't hear the second.
Second.
We have, okay, Mr. Mullinhour and then Mr. Novak and then we have a recommendation from ARP. Do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullinhour.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Hey.
I'm sorry.
Nay.
Thank you. Councilman Baranka.
Aye.
And Councilman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Six ayes, one. Six ayes, one nay.
Okay, um, the next item is Laporte County Juvenile Probation. Requesting additional appropriation for our computers out of ARP, Riverboat, or Lit one twelve. Uh, in the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents. Would you like to come forward?
Mr. Rider, which, Mr. Rider, which one? Where's the money for it?
On any of the three, I believe we've got, right? Yeah.
Okay. Any. Motion for eighteen thousand, one seventy-nine. It's already been approved for Riverboat through the data.
For?
For Riverboat.
Riverboat, okay, um. Wait, do we have a second before comment?
Not to exceed eighteen thousand, one seventy-nine.
Thank you. And who is the second?
Second.
Mr. Keel is the second, okay. Any other discussion before I start? Okay, uh, this has got nothing to do with you. You did what I asked you. You went through the IT department, but this is what I wanna share with you. You're not obligated in my mind to go use this company to purchase them. If you can find them better pricing, that's why it's not to exceed. The first thing I found on the HP Elite Book six fifty G nine notebooks, the exact same thing from HP dot com was eighteen hundred and twenty-nine versus nineteen hundred and thirty-nine dollars, or almost nineteen hundred and forty dollars. The second thing is the HP Elite Desk eight hundred G six. Their price here at fourteen seventy-five, I found four prices. The highest one was twelve hundred and forty-four dollars. Okay? I also have a big issue on this last one, and this is where I would like the data committee to, uh, board to really look into. Why do we need to spend two hundred and fifty dollars for, uh, Office, Microsoft Office and Home Business? The, um, this addition on this, so it can sit on a laptop. I pay, personally, I pay for Microsoft three sixty. It's on ten different machines, including phones, whatever we want, whatever source of media, and I have it downloaded on the machine or through the internet. It's not just one or the other. So I got told today in an email that it's, people here don't wanna use the internet and, and so you can't buy, you can't just do the Microsoft three sixty. You, I'm sorry, if it's working on for me, also being a very large organization, like where I work, we do not have to pay retail prices for every time we want another, um, every time we want another license. It's severely, it's extremely discounted. Now, I know my organization's over, over three thousand, almost four thousand people, and we all have laptops, mostly laptops, which is different than what we have in the county, cause we have over four hundred and fifty people full-time. Not everybody's got, uh, a computer. They don't, not everybody needs a computer. They may have access to a computer, but even if we say three hundred computers, we should not be paying full retail for this. So I really need the data board to look into why we would have to pay two hundred and fifty dollars for each one of these computers. Which is very frustrating to me that we're not doing, not doing the best. And also, uh, we should also look into, um, if, uh, there's government contracts on purchasing this, and HPs are not always the best brand, but that's what we got pricing, so that's what I would suggest that you go after. So that's my spiel on that. Okay, is there any other comment?
Yeah, can, can you state your name, just so everybody knows if you are in TV land?
LaShawn O'Neal.
Thank you.
And, and we also, uh, thank you for having said, and LaShawn, you are now the new person here in Laporte, correct?
That's correct.
And we welcome you.
Thank you.
And I happen to know you from outside of here. It's been a pleasure on that side of things. And now seeing you here and having the opportunity. And yeah, I miss being able to stop in and see you also, but, you know, I have somebody else to look at now. So, and, and spare, and, and, and wasted his time. So anyway, thank you very much. With that, I call a roll call.
Councilman Roosevelt.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, I'd like to make another statement about this. There was, uh, through discussion, um, by going and visiting this office here in Laporte, we found out how old these computers were. We cannot have Windows seven computers working anymore. We got hacked two years ago. This has gotta be a cleanup time. These machines are very old that they've been operating with, and that's why we're having to go with the whole department and not a capital improvement, one year, eh, one, one-third, one-third, one-third. I'm going to encourage you that in three years, we start, or two, you know, three years as they start wearing out, that we go one-third, one-third, one-third till we replace it. So these may have to last six years.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Laporte Ha- County Highway Department. Requesting additional appropriation for Major Bridge. Well, eleven seventy-one or ARP for the Franklin Street Bridge repairs for four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and three hundred, four hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to support out of Major Bridge.
Uh, motion, we need to pay.
Motion to pay out of, did, did I say support?
Yes.
Motion to support my, his payment out of, yeah, not, motion to pay.
So we have a motion from Mr. Yagowski, and I understand, Mr. Mullenhour, you're the second, and just, not Mr. Yagowski.
Just, just for, just for clarification, this is part of the one point five that we did a motion of support last year. We just did not appropriate those funds. Um, and as part of my motion, I'd like to see, um, the remainder of this not to exceed maybe on next month's agenda, just so that we get ahead of it.
Yeah, we have, we have, I have a note here to suggest to you that we make sure that we have this on the agenda for next month and, uh, and put down not less than a million.
I would appreciate that and the, the contractor would appreciate that also.
I mean, their con- their contract has to be done by four fifteen, so this way that no one's waiting around, but worst case, uh, the last payment, if we don't, we don't do enough, will, will make the difference. Make a difference between one point five and this four seventy-eight, so it'll be a lot of odd number, but not to exceed that.
Thank you. Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Councilman Roosevelt.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, we move on to Laporte County Commissioners requesting additional appropriation from ARP, Riverboat, Lit eleven twelve or Emergency Reserve Fund, which I don't think you do, for county liability insurance of five hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-six cents. This is actually for last year. They had a negative balance, and this is to clean up last year, and this is not to pay the current year's premiums.
We recommend that ARP, if you're gonna do it.
Motion to approve from ARP lost revenue.
Second.
Any other comment?
Eh, never mind.
I, I'm just gonna say I'm, I'm disappointed that we have to take it out of ARP money, cause that's the last place I.
But, Mr. President.
I, I, no, I understand.
I started meeting up with this conversation, so I agree with you, but that's not just your statement, it's all of us. If an average senator had a vote this way.
Okay.
And this is one that's gotta be paid.
Yep. Okay.
Can I comment on that or no?
No. We're just gonna go to a roll call.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um.
I just gotta move it.
I'll tell you later in email. Councilman, Councilman, Councilman Roosevelt.
Aye.
Councilman Novak.
Aye.
Councilman Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenhour.
Aye.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Keel.
Aye.
Councilman Karanka.
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, we move on to council and attorney comments. So first, anybody on the council, Mr. Yagowski?
Yeah, Mr. President, we, 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 on this insurance thing we talked about. If we don't address this very quickly, and I know that there's been some problems because we had some people leaving that, I understand. We missed a December meeting, January meeting. I asked for it to be put on this, it did not. We had executive session that was, you hear me okay or no? If you're like this, uh, we had an executive session, it was supposed to be, uh, with this meeting here, and we did not have it again. This is the second meeting in a row. I'm asking one more time for executive session for next meeting for five-thirty to talk about insurance policies that we talked about here for the last two meetings. We gotta get this thing going because we are in a money crunch situation.
Uh, first, Mr., we, we do have. Do you have Mr. Jones in the audience? Would next meeting, would you be available to be here for five-thirty? Thank you, I appreciate that. Could we, uh, call, could we set it up so that we do hold a, a meeting at five-thirty? Now, is, is this a workshop or is this an exec?
It's an exec session, is what he said.
He said exec, but I wanna know, does it qualify for an exec?
Is it, uh, is it on?
It's not based on claims or personnel, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Remember, remember, yours dated that last meeting, cause you said, where's about the meeting? You sent Mr. Yagowski, if you, I would refresh your memory.
I just wanna make sure, so it's gonna be an exec session?
It's, are the commissioners involved?
Yes.
Mr. Gess.
So we're gonna invite the commissioners.
Mr. Roosevelt, I would suggest we make it at five fifteen because I have to be.
Everybody able to make it at five fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll make it at five fifteen, and Mr. Jones, thank you for agreeing to five fifteen.
And, um, and in my last statement again, as you mentioned earlier, um, good cohort for us, we worked together for a long time. You know, missing, not seen on, on the, uh, meetings teams, it was Jeff Santana, I'm glad you brought that up. So we lost a council member, uh, through cancer, and, you know, cancer sucks, but unfortunately, uh, he, he had, he was a great person and a good person to work with. Thank you.
Yeah, you possibly could. I got.
Anybody else would like to make a comment before me? Okay.
I just wanna echo what Mr. Yagowski said about Mr. Santana. And the other horrible part about it is, is, uh, he was a, a career firefighter, so, and with, everybody knows about the P, PFAS that is in the foam that we messed around with for years and trained on with years, and now it causes cancer, so as I've stated before, we signed up for a lot of, do a lot of things, run into burning buildings, get cats out of trees. Uh, and a lot of things that a lot of people would never do. The one thing we didn't sign up for is to get cancer, so, um, that, it's something that's near and dear to my heart. The other thing is, is I would hope that at next month's meeting, that we have some conversation about the highway truck drivers, about the juvenile center people that we talked about at the end of the year, and I think in the first part of the year, that we were gonna be doing something, and I, I would hope that we get something done, so.
Well, I'm gonna add to that in a moment, so, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Keel?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no, if, if you're done, if you don't, if you're gonna make.
I was just gonna say, um, I had planned on rattling off a bunch of events I attended this month, but I see some people here packing up, so I'll, now, now's not the time.
Yeah, send an email.
Email.